All right. Good evening, everyone. This is the Grotten Board of Education Committee of the whole meeting on April 15th, 2024 at 6:05. We're located in the central office, room 11, and we're both in person and online. Present at the meeting is Adrian Johnson, Ian Thomas, Dean Antipas, myself, Beth Washington, Andrea Ackerman.
Jennifer Light.
Matt Schulman.
Phil Piazza.
Denise Doolittle.
Excuse me?
Lauren Cassini.
Okay, nice to meet you, Lauren.
Ben Moon.
Nice to meet you, Ben. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for attending. The first order of business is review the minutes of March 18th, 2024. Did everyone receive the minutes and have a chance to look over them? Okay. Any -- do you have a motion to accept the minutes?
So.
Do you have a second move by Dr. Ackerman to have a second? Second by Board Member Schulman. Any discussion about the minutes? Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Propose, abstentions, so approve. Thank you. The next order is discussion of the state testing and state report card, and I turn it over to the superintendent.
So I'm going to turn it over to Denise Doolittle and Lauren Cassini and Dr. Phil Piazza. They've really been overseeing the state testing, and we'll start with that and the procedures that we're going through now that we're kind of knee-deep in the process.
And I'm just -- I'm signing on. Mark, is the link you sent me, is that going to allow me to share my screen?
Once you join, I'll have to promote you to a panelist.
All right, I just joined. Join as a panelist. Thank you.
While he's doing that, I'll show you that today is Purple Up Day. I think you probably got a few messages. And so we're supporting our military kids, and this whole month is really the celebration of our military children. And we have over 1,000 children, so we're very proud to serve those who serve.
Okay, thank you. So this evening, we want to give you a brief overview of the state testing. We have just started the window of administration of several versions of the state test. And you see, this is taken from the training webinar that Phil, Lauren, and I attended through the State Department of Education. We then came back and trained our administrators and teacher leaders. We have a test coordinator in every building, and some buildings have more than one. It's usually an assistant principal and one of the interventionists. And they support the building in administration of the various tests we're going to highlight for you this evening. The first one is the Smarter Balance Assessment. We call it SBACK for short, and that is a test basically of reading and math that's administered to students in grades three through eight. Next is the Next Generation Science Standards. That's administered to students in grades five, eight, and 11. And then the Connecticut Alternate Assessment System is for students who have significant disabilities and require an alternate assessment to the two assessments I just shared with you. And then lastly, we have the Scholastic Aptitude Test that is administered to juniors. And the alternate assessment is available for students in grades three through eight and 11. There's one version for ELA, English Language Arts and Math, and then there's an alternate science assessment. So we're going to share a little bit more about these assessments with you this evening. So this is our 2024 testing calendar. These are the dates of the testing window. In other words, these are the dates that the state makes the tests available. And I should note that almost every test you can see on the far right-hand column are administered online. We're going to talk to you a little bit in a moment about that online platform because it's come a long way in the past few years in terms of using what's called universal design, meaning there are a lot of accommodations embedded in the platform to make the testing a better experience for our students and so that they can really show their best work through this online platform. So we start with -- actually, you can see the Connecticut Alternate English Language Proficiency is a fairly new test. Last year, it was field-tested. This year, it's live. This is for students who qualify for the alternate assessment but who are also proficient in a language other than English. And that is available for students in grades K through 12. It assesses annually their proficiency in English and whether they continue to require services from our ELL staff.
Do we have a lot of students that form into that category?
We have a lot of ELL students. I believe the term is multi-language learners or multilingual learners. But one of the points I wanted to share with you in terms of the alternate assessment is it's recommended that only 1% of the population tested participate in the alternate assessment. The point is that it's a very small group of students who really cannot take the standard test even with the full complement of accommodations that are built in.
And it is by design authorized through the IEP process, PPT.
Correct.
So the parent placement team decides.
That's correct. Next, you see again the Smarter Balance, which is a test primarily of English Language Arts and Math. And you can see that the window, it opened March 25th. Our buildings are starting, we typically start after April break. So we give the students a week to come back from April break and transition back to school, and then we generally start the last week of April or the first week of May.
Is there a reason behind that?
Just the longer we give the students, you know, to benefit from instruction and test them closer to the end of the test window, we find that, you know, they have the benefit of more instruction before being assessed.
And they kind of come back refreshed after spring break, and then we get them back in the saddle to get ready.
Quick question. Do the students have an option to take it with pen and paper other than online?
No.
No?
No, they're all online.
Okay.
Yep. And then again, we have the alternate assessment. Now, I should note that the alternate assessment is administered individually with a student and a special education teacher. So that does take a little bit longer, and we did start administering that at the beginning of April, end of March for that reason. The NGSS is your science assessment. Again, the 11th graders opened a little bit early in February, and they have already administered the NGSS to their students. I'll jump down to SAT day. That was April 3rd. So SAT has already been administered at the high school in addition to PSAT. But then going back to the Connecticut Alternate Science Assessment, that is the one assessment that's paper pencil. It's really a performance task. The teachers observe the students completing a series of tasks, and they score them based on a rubric, and then they upload those scores to the test portal. And then lastly is Connecticut SAT Day, which we just addressed briefly.
Any questions on this page?
Yeah. Oh, excuse me. When do the results come out, and how are they, do they go to anyone besides the district staff?
So the results come out early summer, and they're what's called embargoed. So they are only for district planning purposes when they first come out. And then there is a date that the state releases the scores to the public and that we release the scores to the parents because every student has a nice report that's generated from SBACK, from the Cambium, which is the company that runs the assessment with their scores and a nice explanation of the test and what the test measures, and it shows, has a nice graph that shows their scores and the different subtests.
All right. And then are there any other standardized tests? And what I'm seeing here is for all of the kid, well, all of the kids except for the top category, the English learners, in K to 2. So are there any standardized tests that they'll be getting?
No, not that I can think of them in K to 2 specifically.
Yeah.
No.
We do have universal screeners, so.
Other than the DIBELS.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
Nope.
Matt?
You said that the release of the SBACK was embargoed for administration use and then later released to the public. Would the board be considered administration for the purpose of your being able to share them with us?
No, because there's a validity process that they go through, so they don't really want it out until it's been really authorized as valid.
Typically, when is it released?
It's actually been much better than when they first started. Like, we're getting that data sometimes when kids are finishing the test. And then, you know, so throughout the summer, we're able to really data mine and start kind of organizing ourselves for the school year. And usually, this year, I think it was late August, maybe, that we were able to share with the board or early September. So it, you know, and get the test into the parents' hands, too.
So we're basically talking 30 to 45 days.
It used to come later in the fall, like, we were waiting and waiting, but now we're getting it much sooner. Yeah.
You want to say something, Phil?
No, go ahead.
Dean?
This process of checking the validity of the results, what does that involve?
I don't know specifically, but we could find out. I mean, they've really never said what they do. They've just said they've got to just really check to make sure that, I guess, they're looking also for their assessment, like, if there's particular questions that none of the kids are getting, you know, or all of the kids are getting, like, they're really looking at it from the perspective of the fairness of the test, I guess.
So when we get the results, or anybody gets the results after they've been checked for validity, is there, are there notes about how it is? Sorry, I'm not even on the mic.
Are there notes about?
Pull it closer to you.
Following the check for validity, are there notes saying, well, you know, we ran it through the process, and just so folks know, FYI, there was an issue that was common, that we filtered something out, and here's, without giving away individual scores or obviously identifying anybody?
Have you seen that, Lauren?
Yeah.
So you know why it was, I'm not going to use the word "saged," but...
Yeah, in some cases, if there was really, you know, a widespread item or, so to say, that, so to speak, that they saw was invalid for one reason or another, yeah, they would, they typically will give us that information. And what we're going to show you later, you can actually find some of that information yourself on this, let's see, the report card that I'm going to show you later that we're going to look at. So you can actually go and look at some of those notes yourself if you have questions about it, and many times, you can find information in there as well.
Is the data ever normalized, fit to a curve, for example, or anything like that at all? I just, I don't think so, but I figured I'd ask. Okay.
But another piece to why it's not shared till later in the summer is also, I mean, there are those examples of assessments, pieces of assessment that are scored by individuals. So it's the whole, you get a, you get a quick, you get a brief, you get an overview of the results, but they're not complete until midsummer as well. Because there are some items that need to be scored manually in some cases or by individuals. So there are a lot of different reasons why it's not released until...
And we don't get all the data released. Like, you'll see, it's a whole journey throughout the year. Like, the report card has just, we've been looking for it, and, you know, so by the end of the school year, we're looking at the report card from last year's data. But I figured this would be a good opportunity to show last year's data, and so you could see the essence of this assessment.
Right.
In its entirety. It's more holistic. Remind you of the yardstick? It's kind of like what the board had constructed years ago.
The rotten yardstick.
The rotten yardstick. They were really ahead of their time, and back then, you were only getting scores. But now, they really are caring about attendance and graduation rates and all those things. So it's very comprehensive, so I'm excited to share that with you. And then it'll kind of get you ready so when that data comes in, we can show you as it starts to unfold, the different pieces of data all the way through to the, to the report card.
Yep.
Bill, do you?
No, I was just going to comment. Susan sort of hit on it, but normally, when it was paper pencil, we had to wait until October, you know, for a lot of the results. So at least, this is definitely a quicker process so we can start building our goals around the data in the summertime, so it is much quicker.
This was the first year all SAT was online.
Right.
So that should also give kids results much sooner.
Good point.
Adrian has one last question.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. So in regards to family involvement, when these grades come out, are they discussed, and are students that are below grade level identified? And is that discussion, is there a discussion with the family about that?
So the scores are on a rubric. It's one through four. So it goes from below standard to exemplary.
Yeah.
And it's only one snapshot. So we do share the scores with the parents, and there's a nice letter that goes home from Phil, and we have contact information if parents have questions at the school level. And the report is very detailed, but it is just one piece of data, and it is used in terms of looking at students who might be struggling or who, you know, who need intervention, but it is only one piece of data.
Yeah. I'm just kind of wondering, for a child that is on the lowest level, is an IEP called or a PPT called at that point if they're significantly below grade level?
We wouldn't...
For more than a year, or how would that work?
Again, it's used at the intervention team. The buildings all have data teams. So their data teams come together and they review the data, and if there are outliers, they would certainly have a discussion about why potentially that student did poorly. Teachers are asked to keep notes, too, to see maybe a student rushed through the test and really didn't put the most effort in and, you know, completed it very quickly. So we'll ask teachers to check their notes, you know, try to have a discussion about, was this a valid score, or is this a score that is valid and that we need to provide intervention? And that's really the purpose of the data teams, in conjunction with the other data that they're gathering at the start of the school year.
All right. And then one other question, kind of going back to DIBELS, which we've talked about a little bit, and like, families being given the scores, have, do we have a hard policy on what that's going to be going forward?
I wouldn't say, there's not a policy at this point. They were instructed to review them at the conferences, the most recent conferences.
Teachers.
The teachers were. So we need to develop that as, you know, again, this is the first year we're doing that test, and we need to discuss what we're going to do. You know, I know the calendars are already being developed for the end-of-year assessments, and then what we're going to do with that data. So that's not set, you know, it's definitely not set in a policy, but we can discuss what the expectations are around that.
Yeah, I guess, as a board, I would love to discuss this a little more specifically. So I'd talked to a few parents that had gotten it. Some had gotten the results, and it was discussed, and I saw the letter that you wrote, and thought it was very good, and some hadn't gotten the results in those. So I'm wondering if we do need something more of a policy so that parents, my concern is that a parent is not going to really take seriously that their child is behind in reading or math or, you know, reading, because we're talking about DIBELS, until second or third grade. So I feel that we, as a district, should give the parents as much information so they know where their kid is before, you know, before they're later on and are far behind.
And I think they, we did say if the parents, because there might be parents who didn't come to the conferences, typically in elementary, many of them, most of them do, but if, in that case, I think they were going to be sending them home.
I was just going to say, we do have a meeting tomorrow with elementary principals, so I'll add that to the agenda about the distribution of DIBELS data. Because I was going to say the same thing. I know they were given to parents who showed up, but if they weren't at conferences, we need to, we'll follow up to see what's going on.
I think some, and probably because it's so new, but I talked to one parent that wasn't given it.
Oh, had the conference?
Went to the conference and...
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, I guess, is this something that there's going to be a policy on that, or can we make it a policy that...
There will be an expectation, yeah.
That they're going to be mailed out if the parents are...
You can make a referral to the policy committee, okay? Go ahead, Denise.
Okay. So the next slide, we just wanted to share with you to make you aware of the fact that the state testing is actually in the legislature. So it has been passed by the state legislature that we're required to assess students in grades three through eight and 11 on reading and math. It does say writing because the CMT used to have writing, but this assessment, the SBACK, really only has open-ended responses. It doesn't have an essay portion. And then the bottom paragraph is the state legislation about testing students in grades five, eight, and 11 annually in science. So, you know, we do share this with parents because sometimes they have questions about why their child has to take the test.
And some parents do choose to opt out. They have to put it in writing. But we cannot opt out any students.
Right.
We must provide the assessment.
Right. And this just shows you a little bit of a, an estimation about how long the testing takes. So in terms of grades three through five, the ELA is about an hour and a half, and same with six through eight. The math is a little bit longer because it has a performance task. And then I think part of that slide got cut off, but it had the total times for math and ELA.
Sorry, it's not on there.
Oh, that's okay. And I'll just summarize it for you.
I think it's in our handout, though.
It's, yeah, it's a total of four hours for ELA and math for grades three through five, and a total of four and a half hours for grades six through eight for ELA and math. And we space it out over the course of a week to two weeks, so the kids take one subtest per day.
How long is the subtest?
The subtests generally are between 45 minutes to an hour.
And if they need more time, they can get more time.
Right. And that leads us into our next slide, which is very busy visually.
Yeah.
But we wanted to...
And I apologize. I don't know how anybody can read this. I needed a magnifying glass.
But we wanted, I wanted to share it with you because I wanted you to see the universal design that goes into the platform of these tests.
Denise, can you hold tight for a second? Were there any questions on the prior slide with the hours? No? All right, go ahead, Denise.
Okay. So this is affectionately known as our accessibility chart. It changes every year, and you see three columns, a blue, orange, and a red. And what this relates to is there's three groups of accommodations. The blue is called universal accommodations. Those are accommodations that are available to every student who takes the test. An example is they can pause the test and take a break. The orange are called designated supports. Those are for students who might be in a tier-three intervention. So there's students who are receiving intervention, and we know that they might need some additional accommodations. And some of those accommodations, you can see, could be text-to-speech in ELA, not the items, but the directions. And then the third column are accommodations that are available to students with an IEP or a 504. They have all the accommodations that the other students have plus some very specific ones. So one, for example, would be if you are a student who's struggling, you could have the ELA passages read to you in addition to the directions. So that, you might ask, well, why would we read the ELA passages to the student? The student's not reading them. You're not really getting a reading score that represents what the student can read. But the purpose would be to help the student not experience a great deal of frustration taking the test, because maybe the student is really proficient in math. So we want them to take the SBACK, but we don't want them to become frustrated that those reading passages are really above their ability level. So we might give them a reader for the ELA passages to help them complete the test and not experience a great deal of frustration.
You'll also get at least a window of opportunity on seeing if the child's listening comprehension, you know, is there, too.
That's right.
So, you know, you can kind of decipher where the child fits.
And then the last thing I want to share with you is, you'll see at the top of each column, embedded or non-embedded. An embedded accommodation is one that comes directly in the test platform. So for example, the calculator. The calculator is embedded in the platform. A non-embedded accommodation is one that the teacher provides. So an example of a non-embedded would be a hundreds chart, and we have to give a specific hundreds chart that comes from the state. Another non-embedded would be scratch paper or a multiplication chart, and it's a specific one from the state. So there are accommodations that are built into the platform and accommodations that the teachers provide. And one of the more recent practices we've had to, you know, to really be sure that we're being diligent on is making sure that if students have an Apple Watch, that those are put away during the testing, because they're really not supposed to have access to the internet during testing.
They're not only Apple. What about Androids?
Any type of electronic device, yeah.
And their computers are actually kind of shut down from the internet, too. So they can only get onto this test site, and they can't go other places.
But I would say probably the biggest benefit to the online test delivery system is that the students can take it, they can take as much time as they need. They can pause it, they can go back. If they're in the middle of a test, they can pause it. They have to go back on that same day, otherwise they lose their work. But they can kind of take a break if they're getting overloaded or not feeling well, and then come back to it later in the day.
Does the whole class take the test at the same time?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And they break up into small groups. So students who have the reader option need to wear earbuds, and they're tested in separate rooms. So they have a whole schedule where it's kind of like all hands on deck in terms of proctors. And right now, they're doing a lot of training, because each year, we go through all of these materials to make sure that everyone who's proctoring is trained.
I would say, though, throughout the year, we're doing the interim assessments, and it's giving us really valuable data. And it also readies our kids in taking the test and feeling comfortable and knowing how to get on, and the teachers, it makes them very comfortable. So I think we've noticed a real change in this process, a little more, I don't know, care and concern and kind of feeling ready because of that.
Yeah.
What happens to the students that finish the test before the other students do?
They bring a book to read quietly at their desk. Yep, yep. But the students who have extended time are tested separately. So they don't feel like they have to finish at the same time as everyone else. Yeah.
Yeah.
That was my concern, because sometimes you see, like, Adrian finished first, and I might be still working, saying, oh, I must be stupid. He finished first.
I never finish first.
I lifted you up.
Well, and they're encouraged, too, to go back and check their work, which is another benefit to the platform, is that they can go back and look at what they've already done and make the corrections needed during that time as well.
And then the other beauty of this chart, and then I'll stop talking about it, because you can tell I love this chart, is a lot of the links are hyperlinks. So the teachers have easy access to the hundreds charts, the multiplication charts, some of the translation glossaries, and some of the training materials that they need. So for example, if it's a human reader and not the computer reading it, there are certain training materials that they can download directly by some of the links on this chart.
Oh, a quick question. I know it's a different avenue of testing, but this chart, I agree, I like it a lot. It's just great to look at, and there's a lot of information packed in a very concise fashion. When it comes to like IB and AP exams, is there anything similar to this for those tests?
I really wouldn't be the one to answer that. I don't know.
Who?
I would think if they have a 504 or an IEP, they would have accommodations if it's in there, IEP or 504. But I don't know if there's, I know with the SAT, there's certain, like, for extended time, it can be 50% of the test time, like, time and a half, 50% or time and a half. So I think there are more parameters around the accommodations, but I believe that they are allowed to have them if it's required.
We can get more details on that, though.
You know, specifically accommodations for AP testing? Is that what you're asking?
For, yeah, AP and IB, yeah. Like, a similar chart, that would be great to understand what's available.
Does it only come in Spanish for a different language, or...
Comes in, there's lots of different languages.
Oh, good.
Yep.
Any questions on the page that Denise just showed us?
We got some questions for you coming up next.
We thought we'd say, you know, you remember that TV show, Are You As Smart As A Fifth Grader? I just thought if we could collect, like, a sample, so you could kind of get a gist of what the kids are being expected to know and be able to do. And I think we've got a sample from English Language Arts and Mathematics and even Science for fifth grade. And even in the math, you can see there are worded problems, and there's also, given an equation, you know, which situation can be best represented by the equation, which is a little different than you and I probably had in math class, because usually, we'd get the problem, and then we'd have to write the equation, right, and solve the problem. So it's a little bit different thinking, and sometimes there's multiple right answers. So you have to pick one, two, or all of the above, and, you know, you can kind of see, and that one, I know I've seen before, but, you know, really understanding what would be yawning black throat of the chimney, you know, and how it's being used.
I pick D.
And what you pick as your best choice.
I pick D. I don't know if that's...
I know, that's a hard one.
I had a question. I'd go with D as well.
Yawning, I...
Right.
I had a question, not only about this one, but about the next one, in terms of the anxiety that... that this might provoke with some of the kids. Because there are, I can see a logical way of choosing more than one.
Right.
I have my preference, but I can see a logical choice for myself on this one between B and D. Well, I'm not allowed on this one. It doesn't say on this one that I can put more than one. So if it said, put as many as you think appropriate, that would be different. So I'm concerned about, there's nothing we can do about the way they structure the test. And I'll get to the next one there, but I hope that our faculty and staff, when they look at the, will look at these before they administer it, and use their eyes to see what they think could be possibly anxiety-producing to a student, and share that through administration to you, so we can provide feedback to CSED.
And that's why we have them take notes, not on the test itself, but on any behaviors that are happening in the classroom, or anything that they think, you know, could be a distraction or whatever, so that if we get results from that teacher in that class, and we are really trying to make sure that, especially in the middle school, because their results were not great last year, and they really looked at how they were assessing, and they've changed how they're assessing. So the math teacher has their children sitting in their math class taking the test. And so I think we're hopeful that the kids will care a little more, the teachers certainly care. Not that it's going to, you know, sway it one way or the other, but we're hoping that it'll be a better test setting, and the teacher will be able to read the students and make sure that they are more comfortable.
Well, I'm glad that we're looking for the nonverbals as indicators, but I'd also like to see our adult educators also look at the instrument and give their opinions as well. It's not an either-or, I think it's a both-and.
Yeah. What are you thinking?
I was gonna say, Matthew, with the science tests, which you have an example, I think it's the third example, we've had our teachers, and we routinely do it every year, have them take the interims, because those are available, you can take them as many times as you want. And it really is eye-opening for teachers to kind of struggle, you know, through some of these questions like students do. But it ends up being a really good experience, because then you can kind of talk through how you would model things through those questions to students.
It's a learning opportunity, teaching opportunity.
For teachers.
Yeah. And even in reviewing the data, and I know we talked about this as a board last year when we were looking at results, you know, not only do we ask teachers to notice it in the moment, but when you're looking at the data, like, I think, you know, I know one of the observations last year was that we noticed kids struggled on those questions that had two or three steps. Because, you know, we talked about a perseverance issue, where, you know, they would find one answer, and then when they, we would continue reading, and it says to go back and find a second or a third, they would give up and move on. And so, you know, then we sort of looked at how we could incorporate that into our planning and instruction to build that, you know, build that perseverance. But that, I remember that was an eye-opening piece of data, that those questions that asked for two or three answers to one question, we tended to get wrong, because kids gave up.
Do you teach them test-taking strategies? I know when I taught GED, I don't know if you do, Ian, we teach them test-taking strategies. And one time I went to NSBA conference, and I forget who the speaker was in the workshop, they talked about test-taking.
Yeah. Well, especially, I know there was a lot done when it moved on to online, because I think there was a big dip in the scores, because there was just, the kids weren't used to manipulating the screen. They weren't used to using a calculator on the screen, you know.
And the science, they're doing experiments.
That add to the anxiety and add to the kids getting frustrated and then, you know, giving up on an answer. So I do know we do a lot of that. And I think the kids now, obviously, you know, by the fifth, sixth grade, you know, they're, they're used to it, of course, but, you know, the little ones, in third grade, it's their first time with it, so I know they do take the time to introduce the kids to.
Because the teacher could do a lot, too, with reducing the anxiety of a student. So hopefully the teachers are doing that.
They make sure they have a snack, everybody has breakfast, and, you know, and they practice. There is a practice test.
You can see, in addition to the interims.
Well, that's, the interims give them experience and exposure to these types of questions along the way through the, throughout the year, every year. So by the time they get to this, it's almost like old business, right? Like, they know how to really navigate the system.
On the science end, we try to give all of our fifth graders experience with all the different question types, because inside, you could be doing an online investigation, you could be creating a model, you could be answering, fill in the blank, there's so many different ways that kids have to respond. But leading up to the test, we try to give them exposure to each of those different test-style questions, and the various tools that go along with them, to try to make the kids more comfortable in using those.
We're real believers that the teachers need to do the math, need to do the science, need to do the writing and the reading, and then be able to discuss it, because, you know, when they get in front of kids and they're doing this work, they like to feel more comfortable, and then they're better able to assess how the kids are answering them, you know, in their different ways.
And I think an important part of sharing these with you tonight, too, is to recognize that it's not like the old-school CMT test where you had a paper and pencil in front of you, you were asked to computate something, and then you went on to the next question. Every single question that these kids are asked, there's multi-layers, there's multi-skills. It's not like one specific thing that they're being asked to do. They have to integrate information, they have to disseminate between some of it, they have to problem-solve and calculate, and, right? So there's, they're required to do multiple and use multiple skills for every single question.
Interesting.
Jen has a question.
I know you had mentioned, I know you had mentioned that there's teachers in the classroom and there's support. So some teachers have, like, two or three classrooms, and they teach that same subject. So is there, there's probably situations where you have a cohort of kids who are taking exams, but the, it's not their teacher who's proctoring the exam. Is that fair?
That used to happen at the middle school, but they really made a concerted effort to make sure that the ELA teacher-
Is their teacher.
Is their teacher, the math teacher and the science teacher. And then in the classroom for K through, or for three through five, it's definitely their classroom teacher. There might be an additional person helping support, but-
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, or is it their classroom, too? Because sometimes, like, environmental, like, if they're sitting in a different classroom, different teacher, might create anxieties for the kid.
If they needed a small group that's in their IEP, then they would have maybe a different setting, and their special education teacher may be with them.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
If we could go to the math problem. I'm not a math person, so I'll ask you, is there any number between zero and 10 that multiplied by a hun, with, this person claims that multiplying any number between zero and 10 by 100, the product is greater than 100. Hmm. So then the question is, what is a possible number that can be multiplied by 100 to show that Lisa's claim is not correct? That's the indefinite Article A, not the definite Article D. And then the second sensor is answer your, enter your answer, which is singular. Now, as far as I know, both zero and one times 100 are not great, are not greater than 100. So we have two mathematically correct answers. But the question is structured in such a way as to be a second-order analysis, and I really don't think we can expect fifth graders to do a second-order analysis of English linguistics.
So it is true that the betweenness, you have to understand what any number between zero and 10 means, not including those numbers, right?
This is why we're at the difference.
So you're right, you're very right, that mathematics now is a language, and the structure of the problem and the way that it's being asked-
You're absolutely right. And I missed, and I think, I'm really, really not that shabby on understanding English, and I missed that between. I looked at it as an inclusive number, not an exclusive number.
It's ambiguous.
So what I'm saying is, there's a level-
You picked that one on purpose.
Well, good, good. So I'm not as smart as a fifth grader, I'll own that. But my point is, goes back to what I said before, we need to watch the nonverbals from the kids, and we need the adults' eyes on the questions, so we can give our feedback to CSED. I think it's essential to do both.
And I think part of that-
We didn't want all the questions to be easy, Matthew.
Well, okay.
We have some difficult ones here.
But I think the-
I made it to the sixth grade, I'll have your note.
The validity is really important, and they do throw out questions that come up as, you know, not working out for the majority of the kids, right? So they do take them out. And I think the practice tests and the, and the alternative are other very well-constructed, or they deem as worthy for the test. So they get those additional test questions for practice questions and for the interim assessment. But the ones that get thrown out, get thrown out. And that does happen. So I don't know if this one was one that was thrown out or not, but it does make you think.
Go ahead, Ian.
So just to circle back on what you said about the integrated questions, the integrated format of the questions, are there, so there's no section of these tests that just has straight, like, one component or two, like, a set of questions that's looking to assess a particular skill or a set of, or knowledge?
There are some, yes.
There are some?
Yeah. So there are some, as an example, there may be a multiplication question, just straight up, but that's, that's not the bulk of the assessment.
Understood.
And it's got, really, they've got to address all the common, or the Connecticut Core standards, too.
Yeah.
Right.
And science is like that, too. So kids will see a cluster, you know, where there's a phenomenon that they have to analyze and do some things with, but then when they flip to their next question set, it might be a one, you know, one question, they've got to answer, and then it might flip back to another scenario, so it kind of alternates back and forth.
Right. And, yeah, so that's good to hear, because, you know, where I was going with that was, you know, it can be hard to assess, you know, there may be some deficiency somewhere, but if it's, they're all integrated, it can be hard for the recipient of that information to figure out where the deficiency really is. So that's good to hear. Thank you.
The next part is sort of a different, different path now. We're gonna head towards the Connecticut Report Card.
Okay.
And I'm gonna ask Lauren if she's gonna sort of take you through sort of what's available out there for you and how to access it.
Well, so it seemed to fit in beautifully with the state assessment, because a lot of what you can find on this particular website is the results to our district and all districts throughout the state, their, how they're performing in relation to us. So the Connecticut Report Card is available to everyone. It's a public site as part of the State Department of Ed. And at the end of this, I'll show you where you can go to get that, and I'll show you the live version. So what you're looking at now are really just snapshots, screenshots, of the different pieces to the site, because I want to just walk you through some of this. And the purpose is really to give you, like, a comprehensive, an overview of, like, how comprehensive the data is, and how much data that we provide to the state, and the state collects from us, and then manipulates and works out so that we can get a really good snapshot of who we are as a district, how we're performing, how we're performing in relation to other districts, similar to ours and different. So on the state website, the Connecticut Report Card, you can choose any district you want. So in this case, obviously, we're working with Groton. And the very first part is an over, it's an overview, it's a snapshot of our district. So you'll see the number of students that we have, the number of schools or programs, the number of dollars per pupil, certified staff, and the accountability index. Now, understand that the students, much of this information is pulled from that snapshot you've heard us talk about. So we have two snapshots a year, one is in October, the other is in June. So this information is currently, most of it is a snapshot from October, so in terms of our student, student numbers. The two, the 10 schools, that also includes our Central Office Academy, our Transition Academy, and our new beginnings program, okay? And that's why you see 10 schools rather than just the seven. If you look all the way over to the right, you see that accountability index, and really what that is, is that's our report card score from the district. And this is created by a number of different indicators. There's actually 12 indicators that the state looks at to give us this score, okay? And this index score is out of 85.
Oh, it's out of 85 and not 100?
Not 100.
Well, that makes me feel better, because I was saying, that's not a good score, people.
Nope, it's out of, it's out of 85, that's the target, and so, and that, you'll see in different places, the index may look different. Tonight's purpose isn't necessarily to look at the data, because we have gone through a lot of this before, so this is information that's already been shared. You can, the purpose is so that you can see it and you have a place to go if you have a question, and you want to look some things up yourself, or try to understand it a little better, a place where you can go to do that. So we're really not focusing on the actual numbers as much tonight, we're focusing on more of what do the numbers mean, if that makes sense. So-
Yeah, that keeps us on track.
Can I repeat what Lauren just said? You're not, you're part of an entity, isn't you?
And I'm always speaking to Adrian.
I am always looking at this and go through this.
But we can go back to it if you have questions.
Do you have a question on that first page?
Yeah, I do. So I might be wrong on this, but I thought our goal was 85.
That's the target number. That's our target.
But it's out of 100, though, correct? Like, so some districts could be over 85?
Yes, yes.
All right.
I apologize, and you are right on that, yes. The target is 85.
Uh-oh.
You caught me, oh my gosh. I got carried away.
And there's different targets for different things, just to make it a little more annoying.
Yes, you are, you are absolutely right, and I apologize for misspeaking. The target is 85 for the state, so everyone in the state, that's our target goal, is to get to 85. Yes.
By 20, 30?
By 20, 2030.
Matthew?
Sure. Well, I understood you to have said that there are 12 indicators that make up this accountability index, and I don't want to get into it now, because it'll just take up too much time, but if you could be gracious enough to send us the list of what those 12 indicators are-
We're gonna show you right now.
You're gonna show me right now.
We're gonna show you.
You're a step ahead of them.
Okay. So my, so I guess the question is, to whom are we accountable? Are we accountable to the students? Are we accountable to the state?
All of the, the community.
So are there different metrics? I mean, theoretically, if there are 12, we could do wonderful in 11, and really-
You've got that one right.
Pretty poor in one, and that could, that-
It gives us a lot of information to-
Okay, well, I'm looking forward to turning the page.
Any other questions?
Go ahead, Jen.
Sorry. So, let me start, this might be helpful to you. If you look, I'm gonna actually jump down to where it says chronically absent, just to speak to what Matthew was asking, where it says percentage of students chronically absent.
Which is all the way down to the bottom right-hand corner.
It's all the way on the bottom, on the right. You'll notice next to each graphic or chart, there's a little circle with an I in it. That's information. So once you get to the live site, and I'll show you how to get there, if you click on that, it helps you to understand exactly what they're measuring there. Notice on the chronically absent, there's almost like a little clock or timer, it looks like. That tells you that that is one of the indicators that goes into the accountability index. So chronically absent, our students who are chronically absent, that number helps to determine what our accountability index is. So the higher our chronic absenteeism is, that actually hurts our accountability score. So the closer we are to see that target, which is less than 5%, the closer we are to that score, the better our accountability score, the better the score is towards our accountability index. Does that make sense? Okay.
And just noticing the shape of the data, we have, we have a place to go and grow and reduce that chronic absenteeism. That has been a problem, you can see, especially during COVID.
But what's bad is the state has gotten worse during this time period. So like, our goal is-
Our goal is always to beat the state.
Exactly. Our goal has gotten, like, easier, I guess.
Well, yeah, yeah.
No, our goal is to get less than 5%.
Yeah, that's it. That's the true goal.
That's, yeah.
Just a quick follow-up question. You said that the little clock insignia is an indicator of it being an indicator, right?
It's an indicator for the accountability index.
For the accountability.
Yep.
You said, and there's 12 indicators that go into the accountability index.
Yes.
So that's one of the 12.
That's one of the 12.
Now, the other things are not indicators, they're just measures that collect on district enrollment.
Right.
The enrollment of race, ethnicity, those are all things that are important in our profile, but they're not necessarily what we're scored on.
Okay. All right, I see. I see some more down here. So all 12 in this packet?
Yep.
Yes, they are. Yep. So district enrollment, again, that's up based on our October 1 snapshot. You know, it gives you a good overview of how we are, what our makeup is in terms of race and ethnicity, free and reduced lunch, which 40% in order for a school to qualify as Title I, we have to have 40% of that school being free or reduced lunch. As a district, we're at 54%. The nice thing about the public site is it does give you a comparison. So as an example, we can see where we are in relationship to the state. You can also choose other districts to look at. So you can see where you are in relationship to other districts as well, for most of these. And again, when you get to the live side, you'd be able to see that.
How difficult would it be for you to, at some point, maybe when we get the full-year data, to have the state, us, and then the Derg as another column, and maybe a selected number, an aggregate of the selective number of neighboring districts?
So we have done that in the past in different presentations, so we can absolutely share some of those presentations, because we look at both our Derg, which is also an alliance districts, and we look at our neighbors always.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We also have for our, where you said, see percentage of EL, English learners, we have two schools that are currently considered bilingual schools. That is Fitch High School and MRMS Mystic River. In order to qualify as a bilingual school, you have to have more than 20 students in a particular school to be considered. In both of those cases, there's 44 students.
In a particular language, and the language is Spanish.
Thank you. In a particular language as well. Yep.
And our percentage of students with disabilities is typically higher than the state, because we have students moving in with IEPs that have already been identified from other districts.
And we do hear that the military people often will choose to stay here and get orders within Groton because of the services that they receive.
Yeah, I heard that, too.
Matthew?
I don't want to cut you off, you have more to do.
Nope, that, I was just going to add on to what Denise said, which was for the percentage of students with disabilities. That does not include students that may have a 504 plan. This is specific to IEPs.
Okay. So I do have a couple more questions. I'm looking at the percentage of students chronically absent, and what I was wondering, I've heard you say, Susan, that we have a number of homeless students who are living in room, maybe in a hotel with four or five people in a single room. And I'm wondering, particularly with this situation that's evolving with the housing. And by the way, thank you very much for articulating what we already knew, that we will provide for homeless kids if somebody is unfortunately dislocated. Thank you for that. But is there a way to find out roughly in this area, in the Ivy Court area, and in another area that I've heard about, how many children are likely to be affected? And what is the linkage, what's the relationship, if you can find it out, between the kids who we've defined as homeless and absenteeism?
We're already a step ahead. Lauren's been working on that data.
Great.
And I do want it, we will be providing a meeting. And, you know, we've talked about that. I want to talk to the board more about that. We should probably make it as an agenda item, to see how we can help.
Thank you. I'm very glad to hear you all doing that. Great job.
There are definitely families that are impacted.
Okay. The other...
We have a policy, too.
We do have a policy.
That says if a student started the school year in Groton, they can continue to the end of the school year.
I understood that, and Susan articulated that publicly, which was very important for her to have done. I was now looking at the situation that's emerging and the possibility that there may be some serious dislocations. I'd like us to get ahead of that, and I'm glad to hear you're doing it.
Right.
Moving on.
Well, we're starting to look at the data, and then we want to meet with folks. So we do know that there's 23 families and 40-something students.
Forty-three students.
In the Ivy Court, just on Ivy Court.
Oh, wow.
And I understand there's another neighborhood.
There's three other neighborhoods, and we're getting that data now. Yep.
Okay. So in the column of percentage students with disabilities, how do we explain that we're consistently a high number of students with disabilities compared to the state level? I'm not challenging anything being wrong, I just don't understand why on that...
Sure. Sure. We have a highly mobile popul, a segment of our population that's mobile, and that means that when they come in with an IEP, which many times they do, we have to implement it. It's really a portable document. So sometimes, you know, it's not by the nature of our identification of students, it's just the nature that they move in with an IEP.
So then it's, I'm understanding you to say it's an artifact of the high mobility, the relative high mobility within our district compared to other districts.
Yeah, I think that's a factor. I think also, as Susan said, we're positioned between Boston and New York. So I think if you have a child who has some complex needs, either medically, cognitively, developmentally, this is a desirable location. I've had many military families tell me that our services are vastly better than some of the other, you know, states that they've been stationed in. And I think that, you know, there's also a program called the Exceptional Family Member Program, where military spouses can request to stay because they have an exceptional family member. And that happens frequently.
Yeah.
Great to know. Thank you.
That's a compliment to our district.
It's a compliment to our state as well.
It is. You're right. Moving on.
So another set of data, so you may have noticed, like, that on this particular site, it's broken down into different categories, right? So there's our student category, our educator data, our performance data. So there's different clusters of data that's collected. This is based on our educators, so our teachers, our staff, our faculty. The FTE, again, Certified FTE, that does include our part-time, so it basically takes all of the faculty, adds it all together. So if there's a part-time and a part-time, that might equal a whole, as an example. The next set of graphs is comparing administrators, teachers to the state, so we can get a sense of where are we in relationship to the state and how our, what our makeup is in terms of educators in the district.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but when this is live, and you hover over, it actually gives you numbers.
It will actually give you the numbers.
You can hover over, so you might see a two or a three, like you see that little slice of orange, which is the instructional specialist, and it doesn't look like anything, but you might find one or two people in there or something.
Right. So that dark orange, that large piece of the pie, that's our general ed teachers. And you can see that we're pretty spot-on to the state in most of the areas. That second layer of orange is the district administrators. And then that light blue is school administrators, and then you have special ed teachers in grad. So it's just an interesting way to look at the makeup of our district. Again, teacher to staff ratio in turn, or percentage in terms of race and ethnicity, you can see that is something that has been...
We have to work on.
...we've talked about. You know, our plans to improve that, because it is, it's, you know, it speaks for itself.
Yeah. It's been speaking for itself for several years.
So with the plans that have been ongoing and in place and continue to improve.
Little by little.
Yeah. Yep. And then the only thing I want to point out is the classroom teacher attendance. And for some reason, they seem to be a year behind with this data, so we don't have the classroom teacher attendance data yet for last year. So I'm expecting that to come up at some point in the near future. It seems like that may be one of the last pieces that's been reported from the state. So 2122 was the last...
Well, I hope 2223 is better than this.
All I've got to say is...
Because is that 16 days a year that the teachers are absent?
Yeah, 16.7, yeah.
And they work 10 months? So that's averaging one day a month about?
And if you see the shape of the data, we were kind of neck and neck with the state.
Two, I'm not bad.
Roughly.
It's not good.
It's somewhere between one and two.
One and two, thank you.
So I just want to point out that with our higher rate of healthcare costs, also is the higher rate of attendance. So people getting those operations and the surgeries and being out sick, it's like a direct correlation with what we're spending. So the hope is that people will get better.
And don't forget, 2122, we were encouraging people to stay home.
Yeah.
That was when we were coming back and if they experienced any symptoms, so that was...
Yeah, they had to stay out.
Different time.
Mr. Piazza, we'll see that whole...
But we're not talking, we're not talking data tonight.
We're not talking data tonight.
We'll see.
I know, it's an overview.
Matthew and Adrian.
For those who are watching, I would like to point out, as you're listening and looking at the chart, that the business about teacher attendance or teacher absence shooting up is a national phenomenon that's an artifact directly of COVID. It is not a Groton phenomenon. It is one we need to work on in Groton, but please understand it is not a Groton phenomenon.
I understand that, but we're in Groton.
I understand.
I don't care about what happened in Rhode Island. I'm interested in what happened in Groton.
But I don't want our citizens to think it's our problem.
I'm interested in that, and I'll give you this year like it's...
We want to do better. We definitely want to do better.
We're going to keep an eye on that.
We'll do it.
Then your philosophy would be like, oh, this district, they did terrible math, and the whole state is doing terrible, so that's okay, we do terrible, too.
Well, you're understanding what I'm saying in a way that I didn't intend you to, but you're certain.
You're trying to put a little smooth on it.
I am, I am, because it's not as if we alone are doing it, or we are struggling with it, we're working with it.
Yeah, we're working on it.
So moving along, I see a lot of little circles that really... Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm sorry.
Yeah. How is this information given to the state? Do we supply all of this information to the state?
Yeah.
And when do we do that?
Through different reports that we're responsible for throughout the year.
A few.
Just, just a couple. So it comes from one of, it depends on what specifically throughout the year they do, they require, they have certain dates and timelines for individual reports, and then like cleanup of the reports. So any errors that may come across, it's a pretty intense process. But yes, so this is just one piece that's pulled at a particular time of the year. It comes from a, that information comes through human resources and frontline and all of that. So depending on what they're asking for, it may come from a different place in Power School or one of our systems.
Every department in central office is highly affected, and multiple departments may be working on one report.
Right.
All right, how long, what's the lag time in between when we have the data in the district and when it ends up on the state website?
It's dependent on a lot of variables, to be honest with you. So most of the 2223 data starts popping up on the website in the fall, usually like late fall. Some of it may, and then you'll see it'll trickle in. It's never, here it is. It kind of comes along the way. By about December, most of it is available on the website.
And then this just really appeared recently, the report card, we've been looking for it. And it doesn't have everything up to date yet. So, you know, as they're getting...
I've been looking at this, but this came up last year, right?
Yes, it comes up each year, but it's more towards, it's one of the last things that they produce. And it's not even complete yet.
And then my second question, when are we going to get to talk about the details of this report?
Up to the board.
When do we get to talk about the data?
Well, we'll talk about that when we finish, okay?
All right.
Jen?
Well, and I think, I'm sorry, I think that's a good question. This information, most of what is already on here, has been discussed throughout this school year. A lot of the conversations have already happened in the fall, like in terms of performance and the chronic absenteeism. I believe we talked about that later last year and over the summer. So it's been, it's part of that plan that the board has for when they address different things.
But we knew that we had new board members, so we really wanted to kind of showcase this, and we can go into some more detail and get you some of those presentations so that you can take a look, too. And then if you have questions.
If you, if it would help, I can send you the old presentation so that you have that information, although it's not really necessary, because it's...
They can get it.
You can come right here to get it as well. Okay?
I think he wants more of a discussion than...
Gotcha.
Yeah, I've seen the old, I think it was at the old meeting in August when we kind of went over this.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, you were there.
But there is some, there is some data in here which is relevant to the budget right now, even, like when we talk about certified staff in our district versus the state as a whole and things like that. So it might be worth having some of those discussions.
That's why we wanted to show this to you and then give you the tools, so you can kind of get on and play around on it. And then it might even, it'd give you more questions to ask and more insight. So we were strategic in doing this, because we thought this would be very interesting and kind of get us ready for when we get the new data as well. Go ahead, Jen.
I know everyone was looking at that top right corner regarding race and ethnicity, and everyone was saying, yep, we need to do some improvement on that. Totally agree. But, oh, but I just want to make sure that as a district, when we're looking at applications, that the applications are being brought forth, but I don't want someone to be hired just because they're female, Asian, and it's whoever's best for the job. And if the person happens to be white, they happen to be white, you know? If we don't have, I don't want us to get into a situation where it's reverse discrimination. So that's something that we just need to keep an eye on.
You're absolutely right. That's something that could be a future topic, too, on the DEI committee and the work that they've been doing, and show you a little more about how we do that.
So in terms of instruction and resources, the information that's collected, you'll notice on this page, there are a couple of those little icons. So college and career readiness, the courses that are offered and taken, that's a part of how that accountability index that we talked about. And really what, the information they use to collect this and to meet that target, it's based on 11th and 12th graders in particular, and it's how many of those 11th and 12th graders are taking at least two courses such as an AP, an IB, one of the CTE courses, or college credit courses. So that's how that number is determined. That's what we're shooting for.
But it also takes the career pathways into consideration, the CTE courses, too, which are important.
On track, it's basically, they take a cohort, every cohort of ninth graders, and of that cohort, how many of them are graduating in four years? That's, that's pretty much it, to look at the trajectory and are they on track to graduate? Are, is that freshman, I'm sorry, is that freshman cohort holding five full, full-year credits? That's what they use to determine the on-track for high school graduation. So is that ninth grade cohort, do they have, how many of them have a full course load of five full-year credits? Next to that, and you can't see because of the screen that's in the way, that's arts access, that is another indicator. So they also look at that in determining our accountability index.
What do you mean by arts access?
So basically, from ninth grade to 12th grade, how many of our students are enrolled in some form of arts, whether it's performing arts, visual arts, drawing studio, any of those courses? They want to see our students enrolled in them each year.
And you might also see the targets. So the targets vary. So the college and career target, 75, the on-track to high school graduation's 94, and the arts access is 60.
How do they determine the target?
That is a very good question.
For each target, it's different, and it's a pretty involved, lengthy process that they go through, I think. It is on the, it is on the state website.[1774.73] I couldn't tell you for each one in particular off the top of my head, but I'm happy to find that information and share it with you.
Many of the targets are 75, though. The majority are 75.
Yep.
Except for attendance, that's 5%.
Yep. So time with non-disabled peers, so that really looks at students that have an IEP, and are they with peers that are not disabled 79 to 100% of the time? That's what they're looking at as they create, as they come to that score.
Denise, are you happy with that number?
Yeah, I think that, you know, I would like to see it higher. It used to be the target was 80%. You know, the goal is, we know students learn best when they're with their peers, so we would like to see that higher.
What prevents this number from being higher? Is this something like in the schedule?
Well, I think some of our students have some complex needs, and they require a smaller setting that's more individualized.
And we've brought a lot of students that were outplaced because of their significant needs back, so that it's really important whether they're autistic, ABA, that they are with their peers, but it might not be 80%.
Right.
But they are there for, in all different times of day.
Right. And also to that, to answer that question, I mean, there's times where, you know, heterogeneous mixture is preferential and beneficial, and there's other times where homogeneous is a better way, depending on the student's needs and what's happening, so.
Right.
You know, mathematically made, I mean, maybe things are changing and, you know, 80% is just not, I mean, is there a target? I don't see a target.
Yeah, I don't see a target. It used to be 80% with the PJ case. That's going back quite a few years, but 79 to 100% is considered general education, whereas 49 to 78 is resource, and then lower than that is self-contained. So we do try to shoot for as much time with non-disabled peers as we can.
Right. But the state's not giving any guidance on this one, as far as a target looks.
No, and I'm kind of glad they're not, because it is an individual decision.
It's a range.
Understandable.
And so percentage, primary disability, the only things that maybe would be worth mentioning here is what other health impairment may mean, and so in that case, it could be like a child that has ADHD, and so they're under a, an IEP versus a 504 plan, and please step in, Denise.
No, you're right.
And then the other disability, which is that light blue, would be something along the lines of like a vision, an impairment with their vision or hearing, things like that. So those would be the only two worth mentioning right now that may have had you wondering, what exactly is that? And then our per pupil expenditure.
Any questions on that page?
Let us denote the per pupil expenditure, consistently, we are just a hair under the state average. Okay.
Which is another beauty to this particular page, it's historical data. In some cases, it doesn't go far, as far back, just because of when the state started to collect it, but it's just a quick, easy place to, I need to understand a little bit more about the district, what's available to me, so you can see that historical, is it an anomaly year, or is it consistent, like are we seeing that this is a trend and we need to look closer at it, or that it's something we're doing well, or whatever the case may be? And again, here's just more special ed expenditures by category, so where is that money going? And then how is our money coming in, percentage of revenue by sources? Where are we getting some of our funding from?
Jeff, can I make, may I make a global comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, Lauren, thank you, thank you, thank you. I think one of the challenges we faced this year on the budget has been that we were trying to do a year's worth of education in one joint meeting and one public hearing. And I would love to have us do, or have administration consider the possibility of doing, getting invited quarterly, where we can present some of this stuff, tell them not only our successes, we need to also tell them our challenges, and have that education process going on four times a year with the council at least, and twice a year with at least the education RTM people, so that when we come with a budget, they're not looking at numbers without the context that we have been familiar with all year long. This, not everything is necessary to be in it, but so much of what Lauren has done could be a part of that.
I agree, and I am invited, and there, in the beginning, in the fall, I usually do a presentation on data, and then, you know, we do our budget presentations, and then usually in the spring, there's another, you know, kind of looking at the summer and looking at the year in retrospect, but you're right, to be able to be there more often and be able to showcase some of this.
I think that will make our job, admin and the board, a lot easier if those folks feel that they're informed in a regular way, not just when we're coming asking for money.
Well, Susan can go to the RTM meeting every month, and she's always on the agenda at the RTM meeting.
I'm not telling her what she should do, I'm telling my opinion, that's all.
Well, and it typically is about three to four times a year that we do do that, but maybe it can be more often.
Well, you'll give it some consideration.
Yeah.
We could put that in her evaluation. She's going to appreciate me for saying that. Dean.
I'm all for disclosure, letting the other folks know what's going on, but be careful. People may not be reading the data the way you're reading it, what you call a challenge, although people may say, that's a reason not to give you any more money, because we've given you enough. We've gold played at this, I'm just making, there are devil's advocate, we've gold played at the schools, and this is what we got, so we're done.
Yeah, that's true, too.
Yep.
It's a perfect world.
So don't be, I mean, just note that going in.
Yeah, it may be helpful, though, I'm just going back, a couple of slides were FTE by assignment category, I'm on the state's website, and when it talks about gen ed teachers, Groton is at 62.8%, where the state average is 66.4%. So I think that, like, letting the council know some of these numbers can be very.
I agree.
Helpful, I mean, we are thin already without the tutors.
You said what I was thinking.
Okay.
Can't get down on the floor anymore.
But again, they could use that against us, too, and that's Dean's point, you know, saying.
We need to be at 50%? We need to be lower, I don't know. We already are 50.
All right, Lauren.
Okay, so, performance data, another part of that accountability index, which you can see from the snapshot that was on the first page, here it is again, that's the accountability index. Next to it is what we call the performance index, which can be confusing, but it's separate, so it's another indicator of that accountability index.
Is the next generation a test?
So the next generation accountability index, that's our score.
That's the total.
That's a total.
That's the grand total.
Yep.
And do you see where we were in 1819? I'd love for this year to pop right back up there.
We're going to get there, we get a lot of great things happening. So the district performance index is looking specifically at, in terms of ELA, all the state assessments around English language arts, okay? Again, it is an indicator, which means it is part of that accountability index, that accountability grade that we're getting, more or less. Same thing, the one next to it, it's the math, so we have English language arts, we have math, and we have science, those are three performance indexes that count towards our accountability index, our score. In addition to performance, so there's something to be said for performance versus growth, so performances, I took the assessment, this is where I landed, I am below standard, I am, I exceeded standard, that's performance, versus growth, which is, how much did I grow as an individual person?
From one year to the next.
From one year to the next, so over multiple data points, one individual, what does my growth look like? And so we have that for language arts and math, we don't have it for science, because science is spread out, it's only given in fifth grade, in 10th grade, or eighth grade, and then 10th.
Thank you.
11th grade, so we don't have that year-to-year growth.
Growth was very disappointing, that's been a focus in every one of our schools, especially the middle school.
Yes.
And really getting kids to understand the targets and teachers to understand the targets and what needs to happen.
Yes.
So that was very, that was the most disappointing of this whole report card.
Yeah. Yep, and it's been a focus, the majority of this year is really looking at what individual targets were for each student, where did they place, where did they place the year before, how far did they get? So this is a piece that has been a heavy focus for the year and building goals. So what we have on the next page, so our fitness is also an indicator, so how our students are performing on the physical fitness assessment is another piece, it is absolutely another area that we need to improve upon.
Very much like the yardstick, right?
It's, yeah. We are getting better with it in terms of just even the actual assessment, because there were a lot of inconsistencies, and to be fair, there are a lot of inconsistencies even from the state directive on this assessment. So while we know we need to get better, I'm not sure this is truly an accurate reflection of where our kids are at, and I couldn't tell you one way or another negatively or positively, it's just not an accurate reflection at this point because of the state's guidance, to be quite, I don't know if I can even say that out loud, but I'm saying, we need to clean it up, so that's a work in progress. The post-secondary readiness, again, another indicator towards that accountability index, and that post-secondary is really looking at those students, grades 11 and 12, that are performing on AP exams, IB exams, three college credits, the ACT, it's looking at that information to determine the readiness and their performance there. The four-year graduation rate, another indicator that is used to score us, how many of our ninth grade students in that cohort are graduating in four years? We are scored on that, we are also scored on the same thing for our six-year high need students.
Those are my kids. Yeah, those are the ones, those are my students who stayed till 22.
So again, it looks at them through the ninth grade snapshot cohort, and it follows them to see, are they graduating within six years? And the last thing is our college entrance, another indicator that goes towards that accountability index, and it's specifically looking at how many of our students are going to a two- or four-year college, okay?
The state gathers that data, it used to be through a survey, but now I think Ajit had said that they have other mechanisms to collect that data.
So what happens is they go through the National Student Clearinghouse, they gather it from there, and then they take the students in our district and what's in the National Student Clearinghouse, and they basically like do a match to get that information. So it's relatively accurate. It also tracks their persistent, like who's staying, so kids who are entering two and four years, but how many are actually following through and graduating to two- to four-year colleges, which is nice, that's a new, a new piece to it.
Well, this wasn't a happy page at all.
I'm sorry.
I said, this wasn't a happy page.
No.
That's not in my eyes. Dean, and then Jen, and then Matthew.
The four-year graduation rate, does that include the high need students, or does that data set exclude the high need students? So they're separated out? Okay.
Oh, they are?
I believe so, yeah.
I think they are, too.
Okay.
Because if you have students, obviously, if you have students that are bound to be here for six years, that skews the four-year data rate.
But there's not that many that are in the six-year rate, are there? There's just, it's a smaller population.
It's definitely a smaller population.
I don't know that it's going to.
Because not all of the students stay until 22, if they meet their goals, they may leave at 20, 21.
So you will have special needs in that four-year population.
Do you have a population at all that?
Definitely, there's special needs who graduate in four years, yep.
Yeah, can you, do you just sort of know from when they hit ninth grade, this is going to be a six-year or a five-year, or it's up in the air?
No, there are many students who we know will stay with us, you know, until at least, well, 22, or, and then there's some students who, you know, not all of our students who stay on for secondary transition skills go to the Transition Academy, some of them work with a company called Sharp Training, and they just get some employability skills in the community, and then we're able to exit them.
Life skills, kind of thing.
Are you ever surprised by somebody that you figured would probably be of the, you know, five or six-year track or a longer track, and they actually wind it up after four years? Anybody ever do that? Just curious.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Does happen, yeah.
How often, how often that happens, okay.
Yeah, some students will say to us, I want my diploma, you know, and that's their choice, they want to leave, they want to get a job, you know, maybe they've, you know, they already have a job in the community, and they, you know, they want their diploma, so for sure, if that's what they want, that's what we, you know, we do.
Are they ready to get their diploma?
Well, it's hard for us to tell, I mean, they certainly have the desire to get a job in the community.
Parents are involved in that, too.
Or do some online courses at Three Rivers.
I ask only because, I mean, I don't know what it matters anymore these days, but theoretically, my high school diploma is ways the same as your high school diploma, but if somebody else has gone through four years and said, well, I want my diploma, but they actually have not, for lack of a better way to phrase it, accomplished what I have, they would have needed six years, but they don't want to wait six years, but they get the high school diploma, you see where I'm going with this, so their diploma is not exactly like my diploma, they need more time.
In order for them to have received transition services after four years, they have to have achieved all of their credits for graduation, so they've achieved the same credits as students who graduate in four years.
So it's, again, awkwardly phrased, it's a legit high school diploma, if you will.
Yes, they're just staying on for transition services.
All right.
Yep.
Okay, just want to make sure, when they say.
Good question, though.
Because otherwise, you know, they say, well, I'd like my diploma, well, I'd like my diploma, too, you know?
Yeah.
No, they've earned all their credits.
They've earned it, okay.
They've earned them.
That's what I want to know.
And I do want to check, I want to make sure I gave you accurate information on whether or not it's one cohort and then split out, or two separate cohorts, so if you don't mind, I'll get back to you on the four-year versus six-year, I just want to make sure that I'm telling you the accurate.
Thank you.
Jen?
I have two questions, so first, the college one, the college one at 75%, that's not necessarily a bad thing, because in our area, there are students who are entering like the trades and stuff, and not everyone is college-bound, you know, so we do have other opportunities here that maybe not be available in other parts of the state. And second, my question is on growth, I know you mentioned how that's perceived, but would you mind reiterating that so I can better understand where the target is 100%? And you're saying that we're at 50, you know, like, on average, like 50 to 70?
It's not a percent, right?
Well, for target, it is, so what that's saying is, the goal is that every child will achieve 100% of their target, meaning, I'm a fourth grader, and this is how I performed on the S back my fourth grade year, I'm given a trajectory of like where I should be by the end of my fifth grade year.
Okay.
Because the goal is, we want to get to a certain place so that we're not creating gaps in our education, right?
Okay.
So in order not to do that, we want to make sure we're hitting that target, we're making enough growth to not.
To stay on that line.
To stay on that line.
Okay. So this is the line, and if you're here, okay, perfect, thank you.
We do get credit for if we don't get to the 100% of the growth target, we might get 75%, or we might even go over the growth target a little bit.
So it looks at two different pieces, and we can, I'm not sure it's appropriate to go in too deep tonight with it, but there are two different pieces to growth that the state looks at, it looks at, did you hit your target, and then how close did you get to the target?
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Or did you go over?
Or did you go over it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Matthew?
Two things, with the fitness standards, I'm wondering if Mr. Romano could come in and help us elucidate this, I'm wondering, I'm ignorant, I'm wondering what the, we place a lot of emphasis on our team sports, and we place some emphasis on intramural sports, does this tell us we need to place more emphasis on one or the other? Do we, I don't want to prejudge anything, but I think that would be, he could perhaps help us understand.
It definitely would be interesting to get a follow-up on that, and even the assessment, and how the PE department prepares kids, too, and does the assessment.
Because I don't think.
They're all good questions.
I don't think he'd be happy with the slope of this line.
But I believe that's determined by, there's a goal set by age, right? And by sex, on push-ups?
Sit-ups.
Sit-ups.
Flexibility.
Flexibility, and then a mile...
And stamina.
Run.
Well, as long as they're willing to wait 30 minutes from me, I can do that. There's one other thing about the graduation rates, and I think, and I don't know the answer. I'm wondering how we view the graduation rates in the context of our military population's transancy? How that affects our graduation rates?
Well, these are the military kids did quite well.
Military kids have done well, but I have to get back to you on that. We'd have to like...
Even if they do well, when we say that somebody's graduating in four years or six years, how do we know this if somebody leaves after their junior year?
We don't.
We don't?
Right.
No, they come and go. Not just military, but...
But they may, what I'm wondering is whether they're statistically counted as not having graduated because they weren't here at the end.
No, but we'll have a smaller talent pool to be able to compare, because you have people coming and going at different times.
That's all.
So if they're coming from within the state, my understanding is if they are first-time ninth grader, they're part of that, that particular year they went into ninth grade, they become part of that cohort. And regardless of whether...
But if it's out of state, that's...
Out of state, I would have to look into. I'm not positive.
Yeah, I don't think they can keep track of that.
Because of the credit.
Yeah. Ian?
Yes, so to follow up on that, when you're talking about cohorts, and I'm looking at the year labels here, these are labeled for the, this is the freshman year we're looking at? Or is this their graduation year?
That's their graduation year.
This is their graduation year, so we, they started four years prior to this.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Also, the post-secondary readiness versus the college entrance. When you're describing post-secondary readiness, it sounded a lot like college readiness. And what's the difference between the two calculations, I guess? What does post-secondary mean in the state's perspective?
So post-secondary readiness means that I'm an 11th or 12th grader, and I'm taking classes that are preparing me for like some post-secondary institution.
Education, right?
Yep. So as an example, it could be my performance on SAT. It could be my performance on an AP exam, those types of things.
Okay.
So that's looking at readiness versus college entrance. How many kids actually entered a two- or four-year college?
Right. So yeah, to build off of what Jen was saying earlier, you know, I think there is, you know, for the CSDE to take a look at, there is something missing here. And that's for the career track individuals who are, you know, maybe, they have a vocation in mind, and they're training for it, and they have, they're gonna segue into that. How do we capture that data? Because that also should be considered a successful outcome to high school education.
I'll give you a little piece of it. We've gone to the Department of Defense. I've gone to Congressman Courtney. I've been saying for five years that we have so many kids who enlist, and they're not getting credit in the state for readiness, for career readiness. This is, and actually, you know, as you know, that there's a lot of education that goes into even enlistment and, you know, and degrees that they accomplish because of that. So it's been kind of in limbo. I know Ajit came last year to talk to us, who is in charge of data. And it's just a matter of having the State Department be able to collect the data from DOD. And Matt, do that matching thing for our students who've enlisted, and make sure that it's validated. And so we continue to talk about it at our Superintendent Military Liaison meeting, and it's one of those things I'm gonna find out before I retire. Or make sure those kids got credit.
Is there a way that we can do it as a district?
Well, we...
Susan did initiate that with the Department of Defense and the Connecticut State Department of Ed bringing them together. It sounds to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, Susan, that there's still a lot of red tape between the class, like classified information that they just can't seem to come together.
I even said if they get their, you know, their paperwork saying that they've enlisted, you know, is that gonna be enough? Can we put that in Power School somehow? But that wasn't enough. They needed to get the validation from Department of Defense that they are then enlisting. And that actually...
And that's where it comes to a halt.
But we haven't, we haven't ended this. We will continue this. And if we need to write a letter maybe from the Board of Ed or something, maybe we'll do something like that.
And it's understandable too, because, you know, you have, just looking at the enlistment thing, it's complicated. I'm not saying it's gonna be easy at all.
Right.
You know, because enlisting is one thing, but then there's boot camp, and there's graduation from boot camp, and then there's like, you know, successful first year through the service. All those things are different areas where there can be a lot of drop-off, right? For someone who's not fully committed or...
Very similar to college, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Like to continue through.
Right. And also, and then in the vocational side of things, that's incredibly hard to track, because then you're talking private sector jobs. But that, you know, again, a successful outcome to high school education. You know, someone could go join a contracting firm, you know, and learn a lot of carpentry or electrical, you know, just do it on the job.
Get an internship at Electric Boat.
Right, yeah. One other thing, just kind of recapping. I was just looking at all the graphs that have the little indicator of being part of the accountability. Not to be too detail-oriented, but I counted 15. And I was wondering if maybe some of the DPIs were combined in the final score?
Possibly.
And also, like, one of these graphs is a duplicate to the overall. So maybe we could, the Next Generation Accountability Index graph is the exact same data that we saw on the first slide, so...
Yeah, she noted that, and then I did notice, though, that that graph also has that little symbol next to it, so that's...
Right.
Doesn't count for itself.
Right. Yeah, so that represents down to 14.
So we got it down to 14.
But I could see the DPI for math, science, and English maybe being combined, you know, into one aggregate, if that's a thing. But I don't know. That's more of a detail-oriented question, I guess.
Any other questions? Last chance.
We'll find that list of the 12.
Adrian, last chance, the questions.
We wanna show you how to get on. Play around in the sandbox.
Ian, last question.
I'm good, yeah. And that was mostly just kind of a trivial. I'm sure like it's something like that, where they just combine.
She'll figure it out.
It'll make me crazy, yeah.
Thank you.
So yes, so this is how you can access the website. It's public. You can go to Public Ed Site. You can literally Google CSDE report card, and it'll bring you right to the page where you can choose whatever district you'd like to look at. In a lot of cases, it will, it can't even give you like a side-by-side of our district and a different district. So I encourage you to go there. The live site allows you to interact with a little more. If you hover over certain aspects, it'll give you the actual number or count versus a percentage, as an example. So I do encourage you to go to that, especially, you know, if you're curious and you're still trying to learn the ins and outs, you know, as a new board, you know, as part of the district. And I'm happy to sit with whoever would like or needs to, to kind of talk through some of this. And this is just our jumping off point to beginning to collect all of our data for this current school year, which we'll start...
And I think I've sent this out electronically, so those are live links, too.
So yeah, you could get, you can access the website right from the board.
Hi, Jen?
Good job.
Do we have this? Shame on me for not seeing it on our Groton Public Schools site, because as families transition in to our district, maybe we don't put an interactive one, but we come up with the charts to show how we compare to like all of the things that Ian and Adrian had mentioned. How do we compare to our peers? How do we compare to neighboring towns? It's just so that we give them a well-informed, you know, site that they can go to.
I see a webpage in our future. I know that all of this comprehensive data is on the board's side when we've done presentations, but I can see what you're saying, taking a closer look at Groton's data. And maybe being able to put some, several of those presentations that we've already done up, and then really orient people to the site so that they can see for themselves as well.
Yeah, because there are some good stories, you know? There's good, there's bad, you know, just informed.
Right.
This is, this was Kim's referral that we prepare a communication piece. This was Kim's referral that we prepared a communication piece on helping attract people to Groton. And this was precisely the sort of data we were talking about, so, you know, when you guys get a chance.
Yeah.
They have something like that for, on a relative website for Fitch High School. And our score's not that good compared to other districts.
I reiterate my earlier point.
How it can be used for you and against you.
Anything else? Well, thank you, Lauren. Ben, Denise, are you leaving or are you staying?
I don't know, am I leaving or staying?
We have just the literacy discussion.
I think I'll leave.
You'll leave? Well, thank you. It was a wonderful presentation. I guess I could speak for the board that we learned a lot. And we'd like you to come back. I know Adrian would love you to come back so we could talk. Like Ian says, dive into the weeds a little bit. I heard you say that, Ian. Well, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have a safe trip home.
Thank you, we will. Have a good evening.
Denise, don't act so happy to leave.
Right? So that's why he's a little upset.
She's like, I'll go.
They're springing her step. I haven't seen that all day.
She says no, because she's on our literacy team.
All right. Next on the agenda, does anybody need a break? You good? Okay, all right. Next on the agenda is a little K-5 literacy update. Thank you for coming.
Sure, my pleasure. Phil, do you wanna start? You want me to start?
Yeah, I asked Mr. Hernandez Corcoran to join us, of course. Anytime we're talking literacy, she's the person we want at the table. But really, all we wanted to do is sort of provide an overview of, give you an update on our work with the Hill for Literacy, which we spoke about at a previous board meeting. They're helping us review the resources that we have for the different literacy programs that we're thinking of bringing here to Groton. I'm just gonna share the website again. You know, it's just very simple, hillforliteracy.org if you wanna explore this on your own. But just to summarize what we've said before, the purpose of this organization, and this was a free program that Lisa sort of applied to and was able to get accepted to work with them, so it cost us nothing. And it's, they're really guiding, you know, their purpose is to guide educators through the process of creating schools that excel in developing students' language and literacy skills. So one of the ways to do this is by supporting us with reviewing potential core ELA curricular resources. Right, the curriculum review process is different from piloting. Again, we went over this at a previous meeting. Piloting, aside from being expensive to purchase all the resources, can be very disruptive to class procedures and routines. So we took this route instead. This allows teachers to really dive into the curricular resources and truly understand the content. This is done with a tool developed by the Hill for Literacy. Our curriculum review committee is composed of K-5, K-5 teachers, interventionists, and administrators. We have divided into groups with three different lenses to review the first curricular resource, Wit and Wisdom, as part of a compendium. Our first meeting, we were with the representative for a couple hours. She gave us an overview of the system, the process, and the review tool that each team would be using. We divided our group, how many do we have, 30 approximately?
About 30, yeah.
Into three groups, and each group had different areas to look at. For instance, one group was examining the resources for phonological awareness, phonics, and culturally responsive and sustaining education. The second group looked at fluency, vocabulary, motivation and engagement, listening and speaking. And then the third, instructional design, comprehension, assessment, and writing. The process they outlined for us for each curricular resource is 10 hours, and they were not joking.
Yeah, no, they weren't kidding at all.
We've, we have completed the first resource evaluation, Wit and Wisdom. We had two different days, two full days, so it did take the full 10 hours. This morning, we met with representatives from the Hill. We sort of reviewed, not necessarily our findings, but you just wanna know how the process went, some questions that came up. And the great thing about this is not only are we evaluating the curriculum as we're going along, but we're developing a series of questions that we have for the publishers of those curriculums. So we are gonna have, after we review both, we're gonna have dedicated meetings with the publishers so we can hopefully give our questions ahead of time to them so they can show up and answer our questions to give us a better understanding of something that, you know, our questions could be based around an aspect of the review that we didn't see, or something that we saw deficiency in, that we wanna know how they're gonna, you know, if they're in the process of updating it or meeting, raising their expectations for that. So we are about to, you know, we're gonna start our first meeting on the next one this week, later this week. And I think if the timeline works, we'll be able to really provide a nice update for our curriculum committee. Because that, if our next meeting's gonna be that first Monday in May...
Yeah, the second date is a week from today, is the second day for the review. We start on Thursday.
So we're doing Thursday and a Monday?
And a Monday, I believe.
Okay. So we'll be able to do that for our curriculum committee, and then, of course, bring it to the board after that. I know I said a lot here about the process, but is there anything you wanted to add?
The only thing I will add is that we've had great, really great conversations with our teachers. They have founded a really wonderfully in-depth experience getting into the resources deeper than they've gotten into resources in the past. I mean, this has actually required us to read through K-5 manuals with different lenses. So when we talk about it being 10 hours, by the end of the day, trust me when I tell you, everything hurts. Your brain hurts, your eyes hurt, everything hurts. Because it really is, it's really a commitment to thinking about our kids and making sure that what we're looking at is going to meet those needs. So I can't say enough about the curriculum committee that we have. I mean, we've got, this is, these people that have agreed to be part of this are the reason why we all come to work every day in Groton. They're why. They are giving it their all to make sure that what we select to move forward is for our kids.
And the feedback from them has been great. You know, after we completed this first cycle, I reached out just to get some feedback, and a lot of the comments are about the thoroughness of the process, which is hard to ignore. But they love looking at it from all the different perspectives. They feel honored to be part of the process, that they were chosen by their principals to be part of that. And again, they talk about the comprehensiveness of it, extremely detailed. It's good to have all parties working together, and they like working in groups. It allows dialogue and discussions while assessing the, while assessing the resources. So the feedback has been great. People, like Lisa said, I think the conversations we've been a part of in our groups has been outstanding in terms of what they're looking for. And what was even great is by the second day, they were sort of like, hey, can I take this? I might wanna look through it over, you know, they took it over vacation, mind you, because our last session was the Thursday before break. And they're like, oh, I might wanna use this. I might, you know, put this activity in front of my kids and see how they respond to it. So that does give us a little, you know, it'll be interesting to touch base with them on Thursday to see who's had a chance to do that and how their students reacted, so...
Back to you.
Don't think I'm a masochist, but I really like the idea of hiring. Would it be appropriate to have one of the committee, our committee on? I guess I'm asking for myself. I would love to sit in on one of those. Would that be appropriate?
From what, what the conversation we had with the Hill representative is that it tends to be an opportunity for the teachers and the admin to look at the curriculum without outside pressure. So I would, and I'm just gonna be frank.
Yes.
I would absolutely sit with you myself and talk about everything that we're doing. I will absolutely do that. We could do a Zoom call at any point in time.
Yeah.
With the committee as well. But I just feel in the...
When we come to the committee.
Well, no, I feel like the work that we're doing, though, during the committee, really should be the committee.
No, I think she's talking about the curriculum, the board.
Oh, no, no, oh, yes, yes.
There's so many committees, so many committees.
So many different committees right now. Yes, with the curriculum committee, we could absolutely go in depth.
And from my understanding, because I have not gotten knee-deep. I really want my staff, I totally trust my staff in this work, and I stay out of it like I do other things too, you know, until they need me.
Yeah.
And so I will probably come in at the end. You know, I just really think it's, I want them to be knee-deep in this work and to really give us true, honest feedback. But they really aren't going to be making any decisions till they go through this whole process with the next group. And then they have a system of taking them through so that there aren't biases and they can really figure out what's going to be the best fit for our kids. And like I say with anything, no program is going to be picture-perfect. Now, do we have to do a program or a curriculum with fidelity? Yes. But there might be things that need some adjustment, you know? Maybe there's a text set that we need to include because of it's more culturally responsive. So we're just going to have to really go with this Hill and their direction to take us through this process so that we do it the right way, I think.
As I said, that's why I asked the question, but I love your answer that you'll come to our committee.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Dr. Ackerman, your microphone is muted.
Oh, no. She had such pearls of wisdom.
I just want everybody to know that I am not a masochist.
Adrian, did you have your hand up?
Yeah. So it's with the curriculum committee now, and you're reviewing programs. Are, when are the teaching staff that will be using the programs going to have a chance to look at, review, maybe try a few things, and comment on?
There are, the teachers are on it.
All of the teachers?
That's, right. So we've got 30 people that are a combination of teachers, special education, literacy specialists, admin.
Across all grade levels.
So across all grade levels.
So they're bringing back resources for their colleagues.
So a sampling of the teachers?
Yes.
Yeah, every teacher.
Yes.
So what percentage of, I don't know how many teachers are in K-5?
How many teachers compared to administrators?
Oh, way more teachers than administrators. I think we have two representatives per building for teachers. We have two.
And also two per grade level.
And two per grade level. And then.
That's K-5, that's 12.
We've got two special education teachers. We've got five literacy specialists, three admin, and I feel like I'm missing someone.
And you and I.
Oh, yeah, us. And the two of us. Yeah, so they are. The nice thing about it also is because so many people on the curriculum committee have wanted to take the manuals back, we've been encouraging them to like, go ahead and show your colleagues. Like, have your colleagues take a peek at it. As well as the fact that all of the resources, for example, for Wit and Wisdom, we had access to, there are some teachers digitally to the curriculum. There are teachers who have been sharing that with their colleagues as well so they could take a look at it as well. So it's not like it's staying landlocked just with the 30 of us, but it's the 30 of us that are doing that really, really deep dive in.
Yeah. So I guess I'm just wondering, before the, because lots of teachers are just going to be told there's a new curriculum and this is what you're teaching. Are we getting comments from the group as a whole in taking those into account? Like, on a more formal level?
As in the, all the elementary teachers across the district?
To some extent, yes.
I think that might be, I get it.
If you have 200 teachers, then you have 200 different ideas. But like, are, like, as a district, are they going to say, we're thinking of going with this or this? Who else would like to look at them and weigh in? I mean, obviously, some teachers may just not want to get involved and will teach whatever, but maybe some others would rather have.
I think, I think what's going to be important to do is when we do, when the committee makes that final decision, it's to identify what the strengths of this program is, knowing full well, like we've said before, no program's going to be perfect and have everything. But acknowledging those areas that might not be where we want it to be. And then discussing how we're going to manage those deficiencies or, you know, whatever we want to call them. That's what we want to work with, with the publisher, whoever we end up choosing. And I think that's, that's going to be the broader discussion where, hey, we chose this. We love it for these 15 reasons. There's five areas here that we're not thrilled about, but we're going to continue to work. We'll work over the course of the first year to sort of figure out how we're going to fill those, fill those gaps. I don't think we're going to have the time to sort of say, hey, this is what we're thinking of doing. Is that okay with you type thing to all the teachers? Some are, you know, I think the district's aware of the process that we're going through. And they're kind of excited to hear what decision we make. So we'll have to figure that out, how we're going to get that information out to the greater population. And then how we're going to answer those questions that come along with it. I mean, it's going to be a year-long, whatever direction we go in, it's going to be an ongoing review process all next year. Getting that feedback from everyone, from students, from parents, and really evaluating it throughout the year, in my opinion. I mean, it's, it's not just about choosing the program, it's about how we're going to maintain it and what improvements we can make. And are we seeing it, its effectiveness as the year goes on?
So you're going, you're going to like, take a year to see if you like this program?
Well, I think whatever direction we go in, we choose the program, we implement it, we come up with an implementation plan, and then we.
Which is a lot of professional learning.
Right, so it'll be a ton of professional learning as well as reflection and evaluation.
Right.
Because, right, if we're seeing too many, if we choose it and then throughout the year, you know, it's an absolute disaster, we're not going to stick with it, right? So we have to have that constant evaluation of the program. I think whatever, I think we're going to be in a good place to start. And then it's going to be about building and seeing which, how do we fill those holes that we've, that we identify.
So are you thinking implementation is, are you thinking implementation is 25, 26 school year or?
September.
September.
This September.
This September.
Okay, perfect. Because when you said evaluating for a year, I was thinking like, okay, not this coming school year.
No, not evaluating to choose, but evaluating to make the program the best it could be.
Perfect, thank you.
Well, I'm hoping the program will be successful, that we don't have to start all over again.
No, we don't want to do that either.
No.
And that's why we've gone with The Hill, because they really have a valid process. And, you know, have done this with many, many other districts and had real success with it. So we're, you know, very confident that it's a viable process. And we do feel like we've got a terrific team.
Yeah.
Of real expertise that I trust are going to, you know, really try to make the best decision.
Ms. Corcoran or Phil, do we have any feedback from districts that have adopted this program as to how satisfied they were?
Yes, so one of the districts we visited was Shelton. And there was an article that was published, I think it was a couple of months ago, about how they have actually, since their adoption of Wit and Wisdom, their test scores have gone up continuously for three years in ELA. When we spoke, we actually went to Shelton, they opened their doors. The generosity of time was beautiful. Teachers demoed lessons, we got to speak with the admin, we got to see all the resources. What they did say for, about Wit and Wisdom was that year one, there were lots of tears and lots of swearing. Because it's hard. It's hard to move to a brand-new curricular resource. But they provided so much professional learning for their teachers and time for them to really get to know the curriculum, that the second year, it was better. And now that they're in their third year, they love it. They love it, the kids love it, they love the text, they love the learning, they love the ability to have, they have a push-in model there. So their special education teachers join during the lessons. So after the, the direct instruction, kids are doing an activity, the teachers got a group, the special education teacher has a group. They just have a really great process and they've unpacked it really, really well. So their feedback was tremendous.
And there's a lot of other districts near us. I think Waterford is one. So really networking with others, you know, we, I do it at the superintendent level, you do it at the assistant, we do it with directors of curriculum. So that it's really good to hear what other people are going through and seeing and experiencing.
When would we start, when would we start professional? Once, once you, once we choose a program and it's going to be started, implemented in September, will we have enough time to get the first real push of professional development beforehand?
And how are you going to do it all year long?
Yeah. So I'd like to mirror what we did for our UFLI Foundation's phonics curriculum. So what we did with that was we met before the school year was out. I met with every grade-level team at their buildings. And we discussed the curriculum. We discussed like broad strokes overview, right? So here's a little bit about the methodology, here's a little bit about the how and the what it will look like. If you'd like to do a little bit of reading over the summer, which a lot of teachers have asked, they would love to be able to have something even digitally so that they can look at over the summer. So that would be a great way for us to kind of launch us into using this new resource. So that would begin this year. That's my hope. Then it would be something that we would need to really focus on for the entire year, next year. The before, the few days that we have before the school year starts would need to be devoted to unpacking Unit 1 and helping all of our K-5 teachers understand that. We would also need our professional learning time, our PLC times for ELA, to be unit planning. We would need our literacy coaches, which go in and co-teach, to do demoing with teachers, to do some side-by-side teaching. We would need to look at our data throughout the year to think a little bit about how is this landing? What tweaks do we need to make? What are next steps? So in essence, all of next year, the professional development, be it the days that we don't have school or professional learning community time during school is going to be devoted to understanding our new resource.
So the professional development and the, I can't think of the word, and you putting out this new curriculum is going to be at the same time? I mean, they didn't have professional development this year, and then the curriculum starts. So they're going to be having professional development and using the curriculum at the same time?
So what we're going to do is it's like a year zero. It's a launching year. It won't be a year where we are going to be expecting teachers to be following very strict scope and sequence in terms of getting all the units in. It's going to be a learning year.
So how is that going to affect the students, though? And the teachers are having a learning year on the curriculum.
So what I will say, that, I'm just going to say, it's going to be even better than what we currently have as a resource because the teachers are asking for it. The teachers have been asking for something that is far more explicit, far more systematic. So just like we did with UFLI, it's the same exact thing. We set them up.
And they really took to it quite well.
They took to it really well. We set, we set them up, we set the course in June, right? And then from the beginning of the year, that has been our focus. So we'll follow the same path and allow teachers to really get to know this resource well with all of our support.
And if it is like UFLI and Hagerty, they're going to be seeing the success in their students, which really inspires them to continue on, you know, and seeing results.
Will we see this success at the end of next year or will it be the following year?
That's what we're planning on. We're going to see some success, yes, because we're going to monitor throughout the year three times with the dibbles for K-5. Yeah.
Yeah, so just to be clear, on the timeline of selection, the Wit and Wisdom, that's the curriculum we're looking at, or the package we're looking at right now?
That's the resource that we just finished looking at, and then we're moving into another resource.
When is the, what's the timeline for selection?
The timeline, I think, was it May?
Yeah, because we're going to finish, I'm just bringing up my calendar. We'll have this review done by the 23rd.
Yes.
Right, and then we have a meeting with The Hill for Liter, when do we meet with them again?
I don't know the exact dates, but we did want to try to get as much in before S-BAC as possible so that our 3 through 5 teachers that are on the committee wouldn't have so much to think about. So our goal was to review two of the resources. But then we do have follow-up meetings, we have roundtables with the publisher. I believe, if Phil was looking at, I think it was some point in May.
May 13th is the, the meeting with The Hill from 9 to 11. So I believe that's the time with.
And that's with the building admin as well.
That's with the building, and is that with the publisher as well?
No.
No, will that happen already?
Mm-hmm, that would have already happened.
Okay.
So May 13th, and The Hill also supports us, once we've made a decision, in suggestions for rolling out and unpacking a new resource.
The Hill's acting as a consultant?
Yes.
Essentially, and a guide for.
Facilitator.
Yes, right.
With the State Department, I think they were aligned with the State Department.
The grant came from the state. So that's, that's where it came from in terms of funding. And the state is, we do have a state representative that joins on Zoom calls as well.
That's good to hear. Just, just to be clear, just, May 13th is the day that, is, the selection is going to be made? Or is that going to happen later?
I think there's the discussion.
Yeah, let me get that date to you, because I don't want to, you know, misspeak. Because then I see a meeting on the 24th, and it looks like a results meeting. So I don't know if that's the final date.
Okay.
I'd have to look deeper as to.
Into the timeline.
Into the timeline, yeah.
We'll let you know.
Thank you.
Adrian?
You can tell, okay, I'm not a masochist, but am I nuts? Now, we're supposed, the Board of Ed is supposed to, to not agree, but to.
Approve.
Thank you, to approve this curriculum. Yet we have not been a part of any of the presentations. We don't know anything about it at all. And yet it's going to come to us to approve. Help me understand that because I don't.
Well, I think what's going to happen is, we're going to give you a summary of what we've done so far at this, at the May meeting, which we just spoke about, about having Lisa come. And we, and by that time, we would have completed both reviews. And then I believe when we make a decision as a group, we'd be able to come before the curriculum committee again on June 3rd, which we're talking, you know, again, as our, maybe the follow-up meeting with the curriculum committee to say, this is the direction we want to go, and this is why. So you'll have the information on the two programs in May. And then after we have a chance to meet with the people from The Hill for Literacy and our district elementary leaders, and we come to a conclusion as to where we want to go, then we come to you on that first Monday in June and say, this is the direction we want to go, and this is why. And move forward from there.
Okay, I understand that. I still think that it's, it's not the best way to go in terms of students and in terms of our understanding. I think if we had been part of, even though you may want to, and I agree that at times, the Board of Ed can be a heavy presence in the room. However, if we are, if our charge is to approve it, we should have been able to listen in on the beginning, in the beginning, and then listen to the rationale of the teachers and the committee after that.
And I'll just say, we'll, we'll try to provide you with all the detail that we think you will need to see our reasoning either way, one way or the other.
Okay, but did you hear my concern? That's my.
Heard.
Yeah.
Jen? Jen, then Adrian and Matthew.
Two things. Two things. I know Adrian in one of our meetings mentioned that there was one vendor you were sort of recommending in addition to the ones that was brought.
The one in Stonington, Adrian.
On the plate, I'm not sure.
That was a full program wonders. And I don't, I wasn't necessarily recommending it, I was just referring to it as.
Like another option?
Option, but there's lots that goes into that.
Okay, yeah, and then, so second, just going back to the role that we play. And I hear your concern about not being involved, but we need to trust the staff that they're making the best.
I absolutely agree. I absolutely, absolutely agree. However, my concern is of, in the process, not in. However, my concern is of, in the process, not necessarily in trust. I trust our, our teachers implicitly. I was a principal, I was a teacher, I understand that. And I, and I support that, and I agree with that. But if we're to be part of the process, we should have been in, in the beginning.
Matthew?
Okay, um, these, wit and wisdom is the product of Company A, and EL education, which you still have to do, is the product of Company B. Am I understanding you correctly?
Correct.
Okay, well, I don't know if the Curriculum Committee would invite us, the rest of the board, to sit in as silent observers to your committee meeting when the presentation is done. I would find that very helpful.
Oh, you're always welcome to sit in on, on another committee's meeting.
And they're all virtual too, so, for your convenience?
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I would kind of like to echo Dr. Ackerman's concerns about the board's oversight on this. So there is a policy on this, and we're, it doesn't seem like, I think, it doesn't seem like we're following the policy. I believe I brought this up, um, about a month ago in the meeting to ask how the policy was going to be followed. And now it seems like we're a month closer to a decision that's only a few months away. So I would like to see some kind of an outline of how we're going to follow that policy as best possible, like a written down outline with dates. Or if we're just going to not follow that policy, would, would the board have to vote on that?
We're supposed to be following the policy.
I think we can show that on a flow chart, how that works. I mean, anytime we have, you know, typically the teachers go and write the curriculum. So we're looking at really a resource. And then, you know, it's almost like we're looking at the resource first before, you know, and it is kind of a curriculum resource, so it's a package deal, right? So I think it's going to be one of those things that the board goes ahead and, and in the committee says, go ahead and, you know, write this curriculum or bring forth this curriculum as, you know, and the teachers do that work, and then bring it back to the board for their oversight. So I think we're doing it, but in a different way. So you are getting some of the preliminary information. We're going to have more of the teachers doing the legwork on, you know, looking at these resources. And then bring you back, we can bring you back the information. So I think you can chart it out with that flow chart, but just as to how this is going.
Yeah, and I, I do think it's a little bit different. Obviously, I haven't been here before where, you know, a major, you know, program has been brought in. But to me, it's, I'm not going to bring something to you that, that's not worthy of moving forward. So I wouldn't want to bring wit and wisdom to you if we evaluate it and it's-
It's not right.
Then it's not going to, you know, then we don't want to do it, so why bring it before the board? What I'm hearing is that, you know, maybe you wanted, you did want to be involved in, in that. I, I don't know, that, that, that would, that would be different for me in that that's getting you in on the-
The weeds.
In, in the-
On the glum.
In the gritty, I guess.
Maybe we can put that on the agenda for our discussion. How we, how the committee itself looks, looks at it to, to be discussed in terms of how the board as a whole, or the district as a whole, looks at it.
And I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's all right.
I'm, I'm, sorry, I'm trying to think of, you know, when a teacher comes and has an idea for a class, they usually come to the Curriculum Committee and say, hey, I want to teach an EMT class because of A, B, and C. And generally, if the committee says, yeah, that, that sounds great, we want to offer that, go back and write it. And in this case, it seemed to me that we came to you, but it wasn't, the state came to us and said, you need to do, you know, to improve your program for literacy. So obviously, as a board, you said, yes, we're going to do that, so, so go do that.
This is the process we're using.
Right. And then, and then it's us coming back to saying, here's our product, here's what we want to give to our kids. And again, giving you all the details, just like a teacher would come back with a curriculum, walk you through the curriculum map, walk you through the pacing guide, and, and you say, you know, is everything here? Do you have anything? And sometimes you can send it back and say, I have questions here or questions there. I, I think we're going to allow for that. I mean, I think we need to allow for that where, you know, but we're trying to find all those holes before we even have to bring it to you, I guess, is, uh, and then as you review it, as we take you through it and give you all the details through it, if there's still an aspect of the program that we need to look at, then we will. But I think this is a little different because we are under the pressure of timelines and-
And a restrictive state mandate.
And a restriction of options based on what the state, you know, recommends.
I don't think in my tenure before, the board was ever involved in writing the-
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, 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 I'm talking about choosing something that we're going to buy for the district.
Ah, okay.
That's, yeah.
But I think even with that, the, the, the school district, well, the administrators and the teachers always, always made the choice.
Will recommend.
And then brought it back to the board. But I'm not saying that's right or wrong.
But share with the board what it looks like, right?
No, I understand what you're saying. But this is a new, this is new.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
And we maybe, we should be looking at how we do it, do we change it or not?
Right, right.
Oh, can I finish? My question.
I yield.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is your last question, Adrian.
He's very passionate about this now.
Thirty seconds. I am. So I'm, I'm actually just looking at-
We're not there yet.
I'm just looking at the flow chart here. And my concern is, is that the board has time to look at a curriculum, come up with questions like, like we did to some extent last time, and then hopefully they're addressed for the next meeting, but so that there's time for a back and forth on that. I mean, so the flow chart is, you know, we propose a curriculum, board subcommittee reviews recommendations, committee of the whole reviews, makes recommendations, write the curriculum, curriculum reviews again, or the Board of Ed, Board of Ed Curriculum Committee reviews again, then it goes to the board for final approval. So there, there's just a drawn-out process, think purposefully. And separately, piloting, you know, so typically the curriculum calls for piloting a program. So should we have the board agree that it's okay to not pilot, to buy a program without piloting it? Should we do a, should, does, does the board feel that maybe it's a good idea for some experienced teachers to try the program?
They are trying it right now, though.
That's typically what piloting is. You don't necessar-, you don't pilot necessarily across the whole district. You pilot in subsets.
In a few classrooms.
Right.
So are there, are there classrooms right now where-
People on the committee have taken the manuals back.
And they are piloting.
And they're, they're trying them out with their kids. They're trying out lessons with their kids.
So they're blending it into the existing curriculum, or they're actually following?
They're not blending it into the existing curriculum. They're doing the lessons, they're trying out like a week's worth of lessons so that they can see what is, what does it feel like? What is the structure like? So it's not like they're blending it in. So they're taking some time to just try it out, but not an entire unit. Because if you take an entire unit, you're actually disrupting the rest of the flow of what has been taught. So an entire unit, they couldn't just start with Unit 4. They couldn't, like, you couldn't take a wit and wisdom and be like, okay, it's towards the end of the year, I know what the standards are, I'm going to take Unit 4, and I'm going to pilot Unit 4. Can't do that because we don't have Unit 3, Unit 2, Unit 1, especially in a knowledge-building curriculum. Our kids would be completely lost. So what's happening right now is that some of our teachers that are on the committee are taking the manuals for Unit 1 and trying out a series of lessons so that they can figure out the structure and the resources to see how it feels and how it flows with their kids.
And to Adrian's point-
Is that true piloting, or is that-
No, to Adrian's point, the whole point of working with, I, I don't mean to cut you off.
No, that's okay.
I apologize. The, the work with The Hill for Literacy is in lieu of a pilot. You know, the state, the state create, I mean, The Hill created this process because they realized the time, the disruption, and the cost of a formal pilot. So that's why we got, and that's why we presented our work with The Hill and how we were going to move forward. Now, I, to your point, there wasn't a vote taken that night, there wasn't, it was sort of a, a presentation and, an agreement, I guess. So you're right. I mean, this, this has been different for a number of different reasons, just because of, I guess, the fact that it's a mandate.
Well, I don't know if there's an agreement. Did we agree on it, or did we just hear the presentation?
It was a, sorry. I, I, my understanding is it was a presentation with some questions.
Right, that's what I thought. Maybe it needs to be on a, on a agenda for an agreement.
That's why I asked for the timeline last time, like, for some kind of a timeline on how this process was going to work into our policy.
When is your next curriculum meeting?
First week of May, first Monday of May.
And maybe we can talk about having one sooner since we missed, I didn't realize we'd missed two.
And maybe some of the teachers can come that are actually using the program. I mean-
I would, personally, I would love to have a dozen, I'm sorry, I keep jumping in here. I would love to have like lots of teacher comments saying, we tried it for a week, or we took it home and read it, and we think this is positive about it, and this maybe, you know, could be improved upon or something like that. But I would, I, I love to hear just like the, the boots-on-the-ground review of things.
I think you have to go through the full process. You can't just analyze what they've seen so far. They have to go through both to be, there's, this process is succinct and it's really validated. And so they need to go through the whole process before they make any determinations for you to get that feedback. But you can see what they've said about both once they've done this whole process.
But we, but we can on Thursday when we meet with them. Like I said, some people took it home, this was the Thursday before break.
Yep.
So obviously, they didn't do anything on Friday. But if they did do something this week, if they were able to incorporate something, we can get some feedback from them.
I think the other thing that you're going to notice as well is, once we start reviewing the second curricular resource, there are, there are natural comparisons that they're going to be making to the first resource, right? And that's actually one of the things that Stephanie from The Hill was saying. They'll be able to say, for example, Curriculum B, the resources are not nearly as teacher-friendly as Resource A, or vice versa. So, yes, we have to, and we will, bring teachers together to talk to you about what they're noticing about both. But until there's that comparison between the two, I think it's a little tricky. So that, that's actually the next step. And that starts on Thursday.
So I, I don't want us to, if, if we overstep our bounds, we're saying to the teachers that we don't trust, trust what you, what you have evaluated. And that's not my purpose. My purpose is for us to, as a committee, the Curriculum Committee, and as a board, to decide if there are other, maybe functions of the board that we want to look at. Are there changes that we want to make? But I don't want to sit and be an arbiter of whether or not we, we trust our, our teacher's judgment. That's not, that, that should never be our purpose.
So, go ahead, Ian.
Just, I was looking at the same page here in the policy document in, in the website here. It's Policy 6141, and there's an addendum to it where it shows timelines of like what has been done, what the policy is currently for the Board of Ed. And so I can, I can share Adrian's concerns about it not being in order, but I can also hear the counterpoint to that, where it's like, you know, the, the presentation or the proposal for a change came from outside the district, so to speak, came from the state. So I could understand being a little out of order on this, but, you know, to Andrea's point, you know, we do have a responsibility as a board to follow a consistent procedure. And it's not so much overstepping, in my opinion. It's more about just, just, you know, vetting and being able to have more eyes on it. And what we offer as a board is, is a diverse tapestry of perspectives. So as the teachers and the administration present the curriculum to us through this process, I think there's a natural offshoot of that, a natural development where, you know, we ask questions and having the administrators and the teachers be able to explain the questions and concerns that we may have as, you know, not, not boots-on-the-ground, we're kind of overview, right? So I, I think it's just a sort of a, a good checks and balance. So I'm just trying to get a sense, when I was asked about the timeline tonight, you know, I was just trying to get a sense of where we are in, in this process from your perspective, and how do we get in line with this as quickly as possible? You know, now, I understand we have, we're looking at wit and wisdom, and then EL is coming up next. And that's, those the only two that we're vetting this way?
Unless, for some reason, the teachers say neither A or B, then we actually, I just had that, I asked that this morning. Like, what if then we would do, we would find a third?
Are the same teachers looking at wit and wisdom, looking at EL?
Yes, yes, the same ones.
Same group.
And the same lenses.
And the same ones trying it out.
Yeah, so if you looked with the lens of phonics, phonological awareness, and culturally responsive, you'll be doing the same exact lens with the next curriculum so that you can compare the two.
So just to kind of follow up, um, from your perspectives, this six-step process, number one is presented to the superintendent or assistant superintendent for approval. And then number two is presented to the Board of Education Curriculum Subcommittee for Review and Recommendations. Are we in between one and two right now?
That's, that step with the Curriculum Committee never happened. We haven't really met. So most of that has occurred with the full board. All the informational stuff, right, I, I think I'm speaking correctly, right? Has been with the full board and not with the Curriculum Committee. For a number of reasons, you know, we haven't met, you know, there's been a couple, you know, we didn't have a quorum at one point. Somebody was sick, and, and things happen. But the process can't stop.
Yeah.
Just, it's just a, I, let me take the time, I will do a little overlap of where we are, what we have left, and that, and the process.
Okay.
Like, that's what you're asking for?
Yeah, basically, it's like, where are we going to drop in on this, on this timeline?
Right.
Yep.
Because obviously something is-
I haven't even dropped in yet, so, you know, I'm really trusting this to-
And knowing when our meetings are going to be now. At least the last two.
Well, when do we have to decide on this curriculum as a board? I mean, what, what's your timeline? It has to go to Susan, so when, when do you think it will be going to Susan?
Well, I think I'll probably be part of this final-
She's part of, she's part of the, all the discussions with The Hill for Literacy. She's a, even though she's not taking part in the actual review, she's part of the, the conference meetings with The Hill for Literacy and the review meeting, in the synopsis meetings.
So will the board have this by May on, on an agenda? Or you're looking more at June?
Well, I would think that June is-
We're going to try to bring you what we have at these different times throughout. But when the, the final decision is made, then we need to bring that to you to showcase what these two had to offer and how that decision came to be.
Or we might have to talk to, we might have to talk to The Hill for Literacy about pushing up, you know, some of their meetings are spaced out.
Yep.
And our process will be complete by next Tuesday. So I think we need to talk to them about getting that stuff done.
And all these programs do have a digital version that's basically free of charge, but there still are the manuals and other resources that need to be purchased.
Yeah, the wit and wisdom was not free of charge, but we had access to the digital manuals.
So once, once the board has made their final approval and decision, then, you know, we can get the resources to the teachers. Would it be wonderful for them to have that over the summer? Not that I'm expecting them to work all summer, but a lot of teachers will want to look at that before the first day.
So are you looking for the board to, to make a decision on this, or to vote on this in June? Before the teachers go on vacation, I hope?
Yeah, the hope is before teachers go on vacation.
Okay.
I mean, I do think, I'm just going to echo what Phil said. I feel like we need to sit down and take a look at the timeline.
Timeline again.
And write it out so that everybody knows what and when.
Right, and if you could, to that end, just like refer to the six points here in this, in this overview.
Yeah, that's what I said, lay it out.
And kind of calculate, like, plot out for us, like, where are we in this? And understanding that some adjustments had to be made due to the circumstances.
Yeah.
I just want to get a sense of where we are, you know, in this, in this process.
Jen?
Yeah, so, um, I think the school year ends like mid-June. So are, just trying to get back to the timeline, are we going to vote end of May or end of June?
Well, I think that's why we have to figure out, yeah, how we can-
It's going to be my task for the next 24 hours.
Create a timeline.
Yeah, no, but that'll be-
Less than.
Less than.
No, I'm just kidding.
9:00 AM.
Matthew?
So I'm going to try to draw the, I'm going to try to draw-
So I'm gonna try to draw the, I'm gonna try to draw the lens back a little bit, because we've been talking about the particulars of, of this. There is, in my humble opinion, a dynamic tension within a large organization between an administration that wants to accomplish its goals, that the board fully supports, and the board feeling that for, to approve anything, we have to own it. And I draw a parallel with the budget, you know, you draw the budget, we look at it, we argue about it, and then we own it. There's a dynamic tension that I hear tonight, and you can tell me if I'm mistaken, that, once again, because this has happened on other topics, on other subjects, and there's been some blowback in the board, that on some things, it feels as if we're giving something as a fait accompli that we're asked to benefit, to give our imprimatur to. And, and that's tough, because if you don't understand something, and you give your imprimatur to it, you own it, and the kids pay the consequences if you don't have enough information. On the other hand, this is state imposed, and we have to have something in place in September. And so at the end of the day, I am going to completely trust the professional opinion of our team, but I really want you to be sensitive, our leadership, that there is this tension, and we really would like to be engaged earlier in the process on just about everything of great significance. Thank you.
And if I could, you.
This timeline is, is, you know, it's hard for us.
I get it, I get it.
Yeah.
But I echo Matthew's concerns, and I have a feeling that Adrian does as well, and, well, actually, the whole board, I would say.
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
And Dean.
Yeah, Dean.
You gave me your time 10 minutes ago. We'd love to hear.
It's all been said.
Not the way you would say it, though, Dean.
Doesn't matter.
It matters to me.
It's all right.
You're good, you don't wanna say anything?
Well, no, there's no use in repeating. I, I'll just say, what everybody else has said is very conventional, I echo your sentiments, that's what I was gonna say, yeah.
All right. Anything else? I hope not.
One more thing. One more thing. Motion to.
No, 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 no.
Oh, no. Oh, you're just like Kim.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, I can go.
For spending a late night.
You both need to hit the road, you both have ways to go.
Safe travels to you too.
I don't have so far to go, you go.
All right.
Yeah.
I will work on that timeline.
On the next, thank you, Phil.
All right, thank you all.
Have a good night, Phil.
Thank you, Phil.
Safe travels to you too.
Thank you.
Next item is review of the referral sheet. Why are you looking at me like that?
Because I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, I spoke to the chair a few weeks ago, before the last regular meeting. And the, he said that we're, the last Cal meeting that we had, we talked about the referral for the policy about recording and publishing all committee meetings. And the last Cal meeting, the consensus seemed to be that we wanted to bring that to a board, a regular board meeting for a vote, to take action. When I spoke to the chair before the meeting, he, he approached me saying that he was not gonna put that on the agenda for the last regular meeting, because he was just going to put it there. He was just gonna forward the referral to policy. So, he's not here tonight, I was hoping he would be, so we get clarification on that. Because here we are now, you know, it's, it's now a month later. And I'm not sure where that referral stands.
I don't know either.
Is it going to policy on the 23rd or not?
Can I?
But my only concern was, when it has to do with a policy that affects the school district, it's not like, oh, I wanna make a referral that, I don't know, I can't even think now. That they, I don't know. This, to me, when we're talking about a policy that affects the school district, the board should decide, yes, we want that policy, or no, we don't want the policy. So, otherwise, I get to say, Matt, I want your committee to make a policy on artwork, you know what I mean? And maybe the rest of the board doesn't wanna do it. We are a board, we should be agreeing upon what policy we want. It shouldn't be an individual saying, I want a policy on this, and then forwarding it to the policy committee. Like, I misspoke with Adrian, when he wants a discussion to have a policy on, what was it, Adrian? I forget.
Family notification of standardized test scores.
Now that should come to the committee as a whole, a quick discussion. Adrian should say, I'd like to have this policy, blah, 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 blah. Board consensus, do we wanna have that policy for a school district, or do we not wanna have that policy? It shouldn't be Adrian saying he wants to have this policy, and it goes to the policy committee, and we write up a policy, do you understand what I'm saying?
I, I understand perfectly.
Can I respond, Bev?
But.
Would you allow me?
Sure.
At our, at one of our meetings, I think it was a regular meeting, I told, I shared what I wanted to have the flow be in the policy committee. That if the administration brought something to the policy committee, we would look at it immediately. If there was an existing policy, and somebody wanted to perhaps modify it, it could come to the policy committee, and we could review it, and of course, bring it back to the full board for their review.
Even with that, Matthew, that should be a decision of the whole board, that we wanna modify that policy. It shouldn't be you saying, I wanna modify this policy, and then the, the policy committee says, takes it up. It should be a decision of the whole board. We are a board, and the board acts as a board, not as individuals.
That, that's not what I said, but if that's what the board wants, that's clearly, that's clearly what we'll do. I'm not, not imposing something. I did bring it to the board, and shared, shared this flow with the board, and nobody objected to it. But if there's any concern that you have, clearly, we'll modify it if that's what the board wants to do. The, the third thing was, if an individual member of the board wanted a policy change, and contacted the chair of the policy committee to, to make a new policy about dogs on campus, whatever, we would bring it, before we would deal with it in the policy committee, we would bring it to the full board to say, it has been suggested that we have a policy on dogs on campus, is there enough interest in the board for us to take it up?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
I know, and I said that to the board. That's what I said to the board.
Because we are a board, we're not a, a group of individuals, we can only act as a board.
I did say that to the board, and I guess I didn't communicate well to you, but I did say that to the board.
And typically, the priorities tend to be the state legislation that comes down to us, law. And so it's legal and binding, and we need to create a policy that, you know, speaks to that. And so a lot of times, it's kind of handed to us, and we're, we're seeing it in the Cape journals and that kind of thing. But there were, there are some of the policies that are still outdated, although this board has done a great job, you know, after that report that was done back in 2013, in really making things more current. But there still are some things from the 70s, and when it, it might not even be any different, so there might not be a need for that. But, so it is like, it's almost like a cyclical thing to try to keep it updated. It's really challenging.
So in the minutes that we adopted today, item number five was discussion rate recording of Board of Education meetings. Ian Thomas gave the reason, et cetera, et cetera. The board suggested that the administration should come up with various options for board consideration, and I was going to make a request to the superintendent tonight, that we have a report at our next meeting of what their suggestions are for the board to discuss. Because it, you know, wasn't scheduled for now, but I, I mean, we passed it, but that's what it says. The board suggested the administration come up with various options regarding the recording.
Well, I mean, I didn't wanna get into the weeds of those minutes, but that, that's not accurate representation, to my memory, of what was discussed. And to that end, also, I just, I, I don't just, I am fine with whatever process we choose to do. And I understand we operate as a board. I just put this idea out there for discussion purposes, and I would, I would, I'm asking for, for support of the board, just so we can explore what a policy would look like. I think what we're looking for from the administration was an estimate on like the, the time it would take to, to publish the recordings that are already being made. Because most meetings are being recorded through the Zoom links.
By publish, you mean post on the, on the.
Post on the YouTube channel.
On the YouTube channel.
Yeah. And, you know, maybe someday put a link through to the, you know, minutes on the website, but that's another story.
Well, as soon as we get that information, I, from my perspective, we're ready to discuss it and move on.
Well, first off, we're in, we're in limbo right now, because, you know, to, to Bev's point, like, I walked away from the last Cal meeting last month, thinking that we were going to have a discussion and a vote in the regular meeting the week later. I was informed the night of that meeting that it was not gonna happen, and that the chair was just gonna push it through to policy out of right, out of his own discretion. I don't know if that's happened or not, so I was asking, you know.
I have no, I have no further update.
Can I just say what practice is, because I think we're really close to making a decision on this? We are now live streaming every regular meeting. And that can be published instantly. I love this livestream thing. And with Cal meetings, we've always recorded them and published them. I think the only tenor was with committee meetings, and there are some that committee chairs want to have recorded, because they need to look back at them, and they, they like to, you know, and, and sometimes our secretaries are helping us with minutes, so it's very convenient. The, the part about the publication, it hasn't been consistent, so there's not a, a consistent practice. And I think we need to have one.
Right.
But, you know, is it up to the chair of the committee then to decide? Or is it a board decision? I think that's a discussion that everybody needs to have. We can do it any which way, but we're almost there. Because it's really only the committees that we're talking about that are sometimes done, and sometimes not. It's been more dependent, the practice has been more dependent on what the chair wants.
What we really need is a consensus. It needs to go on some agenda, even a Cal agenda.
Yeah.
Do we have a consensus that we want this?
I would welcome that, I welcome that, and I encourage that, and I was hoping to have it last week, or, or, I mean, last month, but it didn't happen, so here we are again.
Well, the time thing isn't even a factor now, that we have the livestream.
Okay.
It only is with the curriculum committees, but, or the committees. But if there's a staff member on, we can do the recording ourselves, it's not gonna cost us anything, because we're there.
Right.
And we can just, you know.
Right.
So it's really just gonna be what you guys want.
Yeah, it's, it's me, it's me, I'm the one that wants it, because I need to review it right before, I, I, I watched the, the last meeting right before the, the meeting at 6 o'clock. That's me. Okay.
And you turn, oh.
It's a tie.
No, I, I just, and I appreciate that, and then, as, you know, someone who, you know, I'm on one committee, you know, and, you know, but I like to track, like what's happening all around, and I think, you know, it behooves the board to, to have that kind of access. And I think it actually, you know, does also benefit the community to understand, like, the nuts and bolts that go into it, you know, as far as a lot of the deliberations that we go through. But, again, yeah, I agree that, you know, it should be the will of the board, if we're gonna make it a policy, you know, it should be something that we're all interested in seeing a policy developed for. Right, so I don't dispute that, I just, I'm just trying to.
I just wanna move it along.
I just wanted to date.
Come on, let's move it along.
We're gonna have the discussion, have the vote, and do the thing, you know?
Yeah, just saying, I think.
Well, I'll ask Jay.
Okay.
About putting it on the agenda for Monday.
Okay.
No.
Just one thing, so in regards to the policy committee, and a comment being made that some of them were from the 70s still, maybe we can say that, like, every five years, and we'll put it in sort of like a stage approach, that all the policies need to get reviewed, and it's just staged. Regardless if we're gonna make a change, at least it's been reviewed.
I like that.
Yeah, I did just.
That's fair, yeah.
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 I think that's kind of a way we've been acting on it, but it's not.
Yeah, nobody's changing the date that it was reviewed.
Nobody made a policy.
We're working on catching up.
Yeah, no, I've seen like really good policy updates, like, you know, just since the beginning, so.
Yeah, that would make it not overwhelming, if you did it every five years.
Adrian, could you tell me your referral again? I'm gonna put it on committee of the whole.
All right, yes, I've got three of them.
Oh, go for it.
So, one would be to see if the board is interested in drafting a policy for family notification of standardized tests, and possibly other things of district-wide stuff. But we can, we can work out wording later.
Okay, now. Wait one second.
Where, you want that to go to policy, where you.
No, I, I think it should just go.
It's on the committee of the whole.
Question on a Cal to see if five people agree, or whatever.
I'm with you, though, I got you.
So, so I, I like this idea. One I'd like, that would be, I guess, a Cal board review of the, the C S D E data that we just talked about today, but full review of that data. Data.
Okay.
This was the state testing report card?
Yes.
And that's a referral for a Cal meeting, full discussion, not for a blank policy?
Yeah, that would have to.
It's Cal.
It'd be a Cal, I believe.
Awesome.
Okay.
So, and then, another would be our foreign language offerings, and any alignment with the foreign language study that was done, or the foreign language survey that was done two years ago. Or just discussion of that survey with our current offerings. So that, I guess, would be a C O W as well.
Alignment with, with the survey you're referring to, if I understand.
Foreign language survey.
Is what language you've spoken at home, is that what you're doing?
No, it was, it was basically what languages are you in, and what languages would you like to take?
Okay.
Because there's some, we have some strong alignment with that, and some not, I guess, as far as what we're offering, and just some discussion on whether we wanna offer more of certain things.
Okay.
What are these dashes saying for Susan? Is that the date, the seven, the four, the year, and then the dash?
Those are just the referral numbers. And I think it's the year.
All right.
And then the number. They usually have people's initials side by side of who made those recommendations.
initials. Thank you, Adrian.
Okay, all right, I do have one more. This is the one that I joined the board as my primary goal, to talk about, I should say. But just to review, review of tier two and tier three interventions for ELA in the K to three or K to five curriculum, I guess.
Tier two and tier three interventions?
Yeah.
K to five?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if that would go to curriculum directly, but.
It could go both places.
Yeah, somebody else.
Either curriculum, and then it could come to the full board. These are other things that we've done in the past, but it's like trying to catch up, like to really understand it more deeply.
Yeah. One thing, I'll just ask, that, that foreign language study, so that was, it was just a study, and it was talked about in a meeting, and then that was it? There was no deciding, like, discussion on changing anything after that tenure? I wasn't here for that, I, I watched that meeting about a year ago, but the meeting's no longer up, so.
We can get a hold of that, I'll, I'll look into that to find that original survey.
Because I'm, I'm curious to see what the board had.
There was a lot of other suggestions about Chinese language, and I think you remember.
Yeah, and that's why we did that study.
You know, there were fewer and fewer number of kids taking Latin, and there's less interest in it, in the survey. But I, I don't wanna misspeak, so I'd rather get the survey results and look at it again with you all.
Yeah.
There's a video of it.
I seem to remember you saying you were going to chat with people at Learn, or learn about whether there's possible synergies with other districts to share.
We are talking about that, I think it's actually coming up on Friday. So I will double-check with Kate Erickson, who runs Learn.
All right, so where are we with the one-card collaboration?
One-card collaboration, the last mile is the hardest one to, to do. We're pretty close, but we've got some technical difficulties. Clint has agreed that in May, once he's got the graduation pushed through, that he'll sit down with the people at the library and see, can we do it, or can't we do it? We're either gonna fish or cut bait.
Okay. I really think, Susan, like, now we have a couple of things on this C O W. You should choose one thing to talk about next, at next C O W, unless the, the list is gonna get longer and longer.
Well, I do wanna add some, too.
Some stuff has still been on since 2023.
Right, and some things we moved over to put on our other chart that goes month to month.
Okay.
So a lot of these things that you're talking about are on the month-to-month chart, but we did it prior to new board members coming on, so.
You can ask about that one, sure.
Just need to, I think, go back to it, so that they're feeling like they understand.
Well, what do you think we can talk about the next C O W meeting?
Can I offer a few more things to that list that we, she can sort through?
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. One thing I would like is a number of homeless, homeless figures from you, homeless students. Some homeless, homeless figures from you, homeless students.
We're getting that data.
Okay, if you could get that to, to us, I'd appreciate it. The request for recorded meetings, we've dealt with that.
Number of families impacted by this.
Yeah. Update on the health insurance premium payments?
Well, that would go to finance.
Sure.
Okay. Well, I've gotten two phone call, I got two phone calls asking why, you know, what's the status of our health insurance premium payments? And I have no answer to that at all.
We need to get to John Burke, but we, we're down one staff member, we're down, we were down two staff members. And so one was coming in over the weekend, so I just have to find
Well, your update may take 30 seconds, then, that'll be fine. Discussion of a retreat
Do you want that to go to finance or to the whole board?
Let's go to the whole board, it'll be very quick. Or send me an email and copy, send copy to all of us. Discussion of a retreat to discuss the budget planning process for next year. That's something we need to do, and probably before next November. There's business about how many kids graduate. The other thing I'm looking at is how many school kids drop out. So I'd like to know, this is a referral to Susan. How many youngsters withdraw from school after 16 in a given year? Could we get a couple of years, look at that?
All right, that's something Susan
Yeah, I'm passing that to Susan.
I'm not going to write that down.
I'll write that down. There was a comment that was made about the relationship between our, the composition of our student body and the composition of our faculty. That's been discussed a number of times at the DEI, recruiting, retention, hiring and retention. But to my knowledge, we, I have not heard of a strategy, so I would like an update on the district's strategy to accelerate our commitment to our articulated goal. Based on the slope, I looked, Susan got me some numbers on the numbers. Our slope, it will take about 35 to 40 years to get within 10% of equity. So I'm, I don't want to see the decision made on race, or whether somebody's left-handed or right-handed, or has polka dots or doesn't have polka dots. But the, the general idea is that our faculty should
There is a DEI plan that we've already submitted to the state.
Yeah, we just
So we did review that, but I think Lori would be happy to come in
I would love to have an update.
And the committee that's working on it.
Well, I'm on that committee.
I know you are.
And I haven't, I have not seen the strategy. We've had a lot of wonderful meetings, but I haven't seen a
Did you have a plan? We had a plan?
Good. Just love to hear more about it, thank you.
She presented the plan. We already voted on it.
But we were, there was supposed to be a, a circle back where they came
Yeah, we have to circle back.
A deep
Yeah, we need to have a discussion about it.
Well, one has a plan, and then one has implementation, and I don't know where the implementation has gone.
Okay, and we can share that, because there is implementation.
And finally, for Susan, I mentioned the business of a quarterly presentation to the, the council. And then finally, this meeting has been, from my perspective, a wonderful meeting in discussing two very important things, our ELA and our report card. And I wonder, this is your choice, Susan, or not, I would love to see a note posted on all social media and a message pushed to all the parents that this most recent COW meeting discussed the report card and the status, and also discussed the rolling out of the, the ELA program so that parents and any other citizens can see what we did tonight. This was a great meeting.
All right, well, compliments to all of you and to all the people that came to present.
No.
Now, anything else?
No.
We got a
There's a lot on this list I have to figure out.
Right, no, this is, this is communication stuff, I guess, I don't know. We got that email last week about one of our members. Is that official?
Uh, no, not yet.
No, it's not official, okay.
Okay. Okay, we'll keep you updated on that.
Appreciate it.
All right, anything else for the good of the people?